I saw George out in the hall.
Yeah, he said he'd be a little late and Dennis is also late.
Oh, okay.
I'm good for the rest of us.
Where do you go?
Okay. I don't have a gavel, so I'm calling the February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Planning Board Meeting to order. And we'll have a rule call, please.
Chair Lefaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Fidetti is absent. Secretary is here. Board Member Mutu is absent. Board Member Neely.
Present.
Board Member Fulham.
Present.
Board Member Blazer.
Present.
We have Quorum.
Great. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. First order of business that I want to do is for the Planning Board. I need a nomination for our secretary to appoint Glorian Burke.
Make that nomination.
Motion by. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? We have one, two, three, four, five in favor, including you Glorian, and two absent. You are two thousand and twenty-five secretary. So before we go into a work session, we have a request to take the... Who are we taking, Claire?
Number six, O five, Richampton Commons Targets.
May I just comment that we do not have any minutes? Oh, sorry, yeah, no minutes, okay. I think I'm looking at an old...
I'm sorry, yes.
Because my... I have six as Lowe's and Fisher's, so I'm looking.
Okay, five?
Five.
Five.
Richampton Commons Targets. Okay. Please come up. Claire, give us a quick overview of this.
Sure. So the space that was occupied by Kmart. Is being outfitted for Target. So they do have... It's a corporate entity and they do have the way they do some things. So we've met with them about some changes. Some of them are pretty minor, so I did get some referrals out to the ARB and the Fire Marshal. Changes to the windows, the doors, the front doors, signage, loading dock in the back, something you wouldn't see. But there's some changes that they want to do, some corrals for the carts and some order pickup spots that will cause them to... We'd have to reduce the number of spaces on the property about eight spaces.
Six. We'll lose six stalls.
Yes. And so I'm sorry, introduce yourselves.
Yes, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, to the applicant Brian Kennedy, partner with Torcelli, Dig and Tarrana. Thank you for taking us out of order. I do appreciate that greatly.
You're quite welcome. We know you have an appointment.
Thank you.
And.
Alex Solomon from Bowler Engineering, civil engineer for the applicant.
Present with us also is Alison Manthorn, a print... Property project manager?
Development manager.
Project development manager with Target. And we also have Architect on.
Great. Thank you. Welcome.
I have a basic question. A lot of Targets have those big red balls in the front of the store. Is that going to be something that's proposed?
That's proposed also. So I definitely want to speak to you about that, whether you'd want to be that part of this application. They're asking for two phases. One would be an expedited, so they could get it going. As I said, the windows and doors. And then the other part would be the changes to the parking. They would need a variance for that because they're already at their max with parking for the entire site. So this is the front side. And I do have elevation underings too.
So they need a variance for the parking. What about the red balls?
Not the balls. They're considered functional, right? They're bollards.
They're bollards.
They are, but they are painted red. So in some people's eyes, they might consider that like a logo or a sign.
I think it is.
And I understand that. Yeah.
Every Target I've been to, yes.
So this is done in the rendering for you?
Bullseye.
It does. And on this site, we are proposing a white bullseye at the top.
Instead of red.
Correct. The bollards will be.
Gray with the white.
Correct.
Much nicer.
Approximately thirty inches tall and they will.
Be white? Be gray?
No, they will be red.
The red balls?
Correct. The bollards in front of the walkway.
So are the bollards there for protection so that the cars can get into the glass doors?
Correct, correct. Exactly. In front of both entrances.
And what they're doing is they're... So right now there's a curb, right, in the very small handicap ramp up. What they're... And I'm assuming if you're wrong, but they do a very expansive curb, which is why they need the bollards because it is all accreted with cars. So they don't want the cars to run into the building.
Understood.
So that is the point.
It's a flush grade situation.
Okay. So that we can systematically do this, let's go down one by one by one of all of your requests, okay?
Okay. Here's a resolution. So you can see what the comments are so far. And then we'll go.
Tom, you want to?
Sure.
Tom's got it. I gave it... Yeah, I gave it to Tom.
Okay, you have it.
Yep. You have it, Tom.
I got it. Thank you.
George. Now here's George. My question is, George is here.
I need one back.
Go ahead.
Here, George.
Madam Chair, acknowledge what Madam Mutu is presenting.
Thank you.
Okay.
So as Claire pointed out in her brief overview, we intend to take the entire space vacated by Kmart, approximately ninety-one thousand square feet. That is typically smaller than the Target stores that you and I shop at here on Long Island. They're generally between one hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet to one hundred and forty thousand square feet. As part of this application, we will need a six-stall reduction in the previously approved parking variance. The prior application, I believe it was TJ Maxx, came before you folks and was granted a parking reduction to five hundred and forty-three stalls. We will need to reduce that to five hundred and thirty-seven stalls. I do have Alex here, if you'd like to take us quickly through the site plan. There are minor modifications, as Claire indicated, to the loading docks, but the facade will be completely upgraded. We were before the Architectural Review Board on February fourth. They were incredibly positive on our proposed changes. They prepared a memo?
Yes, and it's in the resolution.
It is, yes. Okay. Supporting this. But Alex, if you want to take them just quickly through the proposed.
Absolutely. So minor changes, as Brian alluded to. In the back of house area, which is planned north on your sheets, the existing rear loading docks are to be refurbished with minor grade changes in high-strength concrete. Additionally, the existing trash compactor just south of that will be replaced in kind. It's need for a new trash compactor replaced in. And the structural pattern beneath will be replaced.
The what?
The structural pad beneath it will be replaced. That's your back of house area. The front of the building and the front parking area will be receiving some minor improvements as well. The new enhanced pedestrian safety improvements, such as the bollards that we've spoken to about before, in addition to some enhanced crosswalk striping in front of those to account for the new larger depressed curb that we spoke of. Furthermore, there's a new onsite grease trap system, which we are currently in with the Health Department for application. Received very minor comments on that initial submission. That will be geared towards the new Starbucks, which we placed inside the Target. There'll be a Starbucks kiosk that will need the grease trap system to be approved by the county. Furthermore, there's some minor parking changes that were spoken of before. There will be the two existing double cart corrals that were associated with Kmart will be removed. Four new double cart corrals will be added. That is the Target's cart corral system. And ten Target drive-up stalls will be installed as well.
The site plan.
The result of those two parking changes will net a reduction of six parking stalls. However, it's important to note that the parking layout and the parking access and the parking drive aisles are not changing. Furthermore, there will be some new building signage and drive-up parking signage added that's associated with the drive-up stalls. Those were also presented before the ARB last week with the approval associated with that. And just furthermore, some architectural facade upgrades that Brian mentioned as well, which sums up.
The one thing I would like to point out to regarding the drive-up stalls. We have ten proposed. If you take a look at the plan right in front of that portion where the walkway is, you can see it on that. Right there in the blowout.
Yes, yes.
Right there. We had initially proposed a tall sign that read "Drive Up" on it on all four sides. Claire and Janice were very clear that that might not be received well. So we are just proposing small signage in front of each of those stalls.
And what do they look like?
They're in the run green. You can see them in the run green.
First page of the rendering.
Oh, I see. So that's where they're going to be there.
Correct. Generally, and I'm sure all of you guys have utilized these types of stalls. People are placing their orders online or on an app, coming to pick up their delivery at Target. Employee will walk out the delivery loaded into the car. They generally come during off-peak hours and their stay time at the site is less than ten minutes.
So what does this say, this sign, space one?
Correct. So when you get there, you'll call up the customer service line, say, "I have an order for Mr. Kennedy. I'm in space one." Target employee will come out and deliver it into the back of your car.
Yeah. There are these... These exist already for King Cullen and for Walgreens in the shopping center?
Okay.
They do. They're blue and green.
And so is this all consistent?
So this one, do these have aisles next to them? They do.
Minor, like standing aisles, not drive aisles.
Okay. So yeah, so the ones I think with the King Cullen, and they don't have these aisles next to them. They just have signs up for them, right? Is that what they have?
Yeah.
They put up... I think they just put some signs up in existing spaces.
Yes, as I'm saying, yeah.
This is more thoughtfully presented. This is restrypping of the area. Again, a standing area for the employees, so they're not standing between the cars and such. So it's a more thoughtful presentation of that concept.
So Claire, just a question about parking, okay?
Yeah.
So this is all cooperative shared parking in this lot?
Yeah. The whole two sites are.
The whole two sites.
The two sites.
So given what Glorian and Tom just brought to light of... These are restricted parking spaces, correct? And deducted from?
So the others, and I'm not sure that that has actually been brought to us.
Hmm, right. Yeah, Walgreens is on the same property and then King Cullen is on the other property, so.
So the question is, are we reducing the general overall open parking by allowing all of this to happen? Question. I don't know.
Yeah. It's a new animal, right?
Could be interesting to start doing with that stuff. Well, are they close enough? And I haven't been to that shopping center in a while where they could have like cooperative, shared numbered spaces.
The Walgreens are relatively close.
Target and King Cullen are close.
But the other side of the shopping center is far.
I just... I always go to King Cullen, but I just started going to Walgreens for some stuff. And so I'm aware of the signs.
Do you use the pickup at either of them?
No.
It's very convenient.
And you've.
I like to touch my timbers.
You've delegated eight spaces. Now, is that based on a history of your other stores, given the fact that this is a small store?
Correct. It's smaller than other sites.
Yes, our prototype is eighteen stalls for pickup.
This is ten, to be clear.
So just based on, again, trying to mitigate the reduction in parking while still accommodating what we believe will need from customers.
I'm... Okay. I'm just going to request that we take a look at the overall parking.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's... There's two facets here. Some things that I think are simple. I mean, the signage is going to be a target here, right? Those are things that they can progress and start to plan and order the sign, things like that. And then the parking, they need a variance. So they'll need a pre-submission from you and they'll need a variance from the zoning board appeals, and then they'll be back to you for site plan for the details.
Okay.
It's interesting to cut there because the same thought crossed my mind, were you counting those spots? If you didn't have those spots, then some people couldn't pick up. They'd have to find a parking spot anyway.
And then going in to pick up.
Reducing the number of trips into the store. And we will have a parking analysis for submission to you.
Yeah, I think that's important for us to know if there are shopping pattern changes now happening.
You also put in four... Sorry, two, four, six carts, so you lost two spots there. But it also helped with cars being littered for us.
Exactly.
There's a net benefit.
Hmm, yeah. With the addition of the loading dock, can you just describe the circulation in the rear of the building and, you know, if there's any thoughts around that?
Just to clarify, we're just rehabbing and refurbishing the existing loading dock. So there are three loading bays. The loading bays are remaining at three. It's just wear and tear. So a new tenant's coming in, brand-new concrete, making sure everything is as it should be. So rehabbing and refreshing.
Because that road is the cross-access and those roads are used all the time.
Yes.
Right.
You pass by those loading docks all the time.
That ring road that goes around the back, yes.
It's called cross-access.
Oh, excuse me, cross-access, yes.
Yeah. So this is tucked back into the building and you can see where the parking is.
You see the back here? Yeah, I just thought you said new loading dock, which you meant refresh.
Refreshing to the existing, yes, of course.
Thank you. No problem. I said reconstructed, I thought.
Okay.
We're not losing any parking in the back.
No.
Everything's in the front.
So the sign looks great. I mean, you're going to do it in white, so that's nice and that's simple. So what else to the front do we need to be looking at?
They had the red bollards.
Yeah.
And I've seen that in a lot of stores. They were three feet under.
Thirty inches, exactly. Safety features. I understand they are essential to the Target brand.
How about the dropped curb, though? Could you just do two bollards and then just keep the curb as it is?
I think that we would have to, yeah, push back on that a bit. I would suspect that we need... How many do we have proposed? Five?
Five.
Yeah. The entire.
Come on up. You have to identify yourself and refer to.
Sorry, Alison Manthorn.
Go ahead. Yeah, come on up.
We have mics here, so.
Senior development manager for Target. Yeah, I mean, this is very much our standard with the widened flush curb to allow customers and carts free access. Our carts are fairly large. So yeah, to limit it to, you know, a narrow typical curb cut opening would be undesirable to us, for sure. You know.
What are the dimensions of those? Height?
Thirty inches.
They're thirty inches.
Thirty inches.
Well, you also have, I mean, there is all these, like, columns blocking it anyways.
Well, I mean, there's space. I mean, so just FYI, Architect is online. I guess you haven't started the online meeting if we need him to speak to it, but.
What we can do is, I think, I hear a couple comments on the bollards.
Yes.
We can parse that out and we could have that be an discussion at the pre-submission stage, whether it's warranted to go all the way through for the bollards or
Just of segment.
might there be a compromise that might satisfy the board about if you assign, "Here I am on Target."
What about matching the color of the target logo?
Well, the challenge is the point of them.
Less in your face.
Is to... But the point is to be in your face because it's where the curb is flush. And so we don't want a vehicle to accidentally drive up on the sidewalk where we have customers waiting to cross the drive aisle or someone to even want to drive their car up there to load something into the car. Because you have, you know, bigger items, TVs, furniture pieces, things like that. So we really do want it to be very visible because in addition to being a physical barrier to keep someone driving up there, we want them to see it and not make that movement towards the sidewalk.
It's more of a safety issue as well.
Exactly, a hundred percent.
It is, and.
I was going to ask you the question, and you've gone the different way, is are they intended to be placed also as crash barriers from somebody driving into the store?
I think that they are not whatever the ASTM requirement is for crash barrier, but they are... It's a three-foot-deep post. I mean, they're really hard to move. So effectually, yes, but not like ASTM standard for that. Yeah. But we do place them in front of the glass where there is depressed curb for that exact reason or where we have benches or things like that at other locations, yeah. I think the core issue here really, like, when you're doing your submission, is to do a study of signage for other corporations in the area because that's really what has been done in the past is sort of a limiting of the major branding elements and, you know, the additional bollards and the striping really is an extension of signage, to my interpretation. So in fairness to other companies that have had to modify that strategy, you know.
Which we understand.
Well, it's called logo extension and brand identification.
Which... That's a huge reason they chose to go with the white on the top sign that is visible from the street. These bollards are very likely not going to be visible from Montauk Highway with cars at the site. They'll serve more of a safety purpose from the vehicles that are entering in there.
Well, I think what we're saying is that we have a master plan for this whole common and it's a good-looking shopping center because of that and because people conform to the signage law. We had an issue where we had someone put up a sign that was way too big and they had to take it down and make it.
We're still working on that.
Conform. So that's what you hear. But what can we... What you want... You need some approvals now, is that?
Well, not today. So what I'm hearing is the bollards are an issue. Parkings are an issue. I think we can work on a list.
Overall parking.
Very clear. We'll get you something to consider for the next meeting. But today, I think we just would deem the pre-submission completes. It'll have the parking issues there, possibly the bollards. We can come back and talk about that issue. Today, we'll start the pre-submission and then we'll talk about it at the meeting.
Okay, good.
Does that sound good?
Any other?
And we've discussed this at other meetings before, but since COVID and since online shopping, the feeling among many professionals, I think, is that parking requirements, you know, have changed from, you know, what was in the ITE manuals. I don't know if those have been updated or not, but, you know, there may be information, there may be even from your own stores as to what percentage of parking spaces are actually being used nowadays. I would just encourage you to look at whatever you can with regard to the newest information.
And we do track a lot of that. Unfortunately, a lot of the drive-up at this stage is pretty anecdotal. But to your point, yes, I mean, it's definitely changing people's driving habits. It's also a really good way to allow someone to come and shop that at a time where they wouldn't otherwise because they can just zoom in, you know, get their backpack, pick their package up in five minutes and be on their way, which they might do on a Tuesday, whereas otherwise they would go shop not till Saturday, Sunday, when they have the time. So it really has changed habits and traffic and all of those things. So yeah, we will, as I said, we started a parking study and we'll make sure we get as much of that.
I mean, we... The people who live here know that, and I know personally, that that Richampton Commons lot, and at certain times of the year, it's packed.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah.
You cannot find a spot. So it's not like it's underutilized where we can just say, "Okay, take eight lots, take eight parking spaces and restrict them." Cumulatively, the overall parking calculation is important now. If we say we're taking forty spaces out because King Cullen did it, Walgreens did it, and now Target, we're not doing our job as planners. And I think Tom is making that point.
You know, I don't go... That's too far east for me to. So I'll just ask a general question here. It's a lot of parking. And look, you drive to some other shopping centers and you see an overabundance of parking. If we're there really, somebody... Your Target store in Riverhead, between Target and, you know, that place is half-empty most of the time. My question really is, are all these parking spots, whether it's filled by customers shopping or people parking there, leaving their cars or from adjacent properties?
No, I think it's customers because there are a lot of retail stores in this.
I've never seen it used or anything else.
Yeah.
It's the only game in town east of the canal.
Yeah. So people come from.
That Kmart had talked to shop the highest gross revenue of any Kmart in the United States when Kmart was kicking.
I would just say, and I realize that there's going to be much more discussion about this, but for us, the drive-up is a very... It's a very specific, very integral part of our business. So whereas for like a Walgreens, you know, it might be a couple people do that, you know, it's not as big of a function. Like, our shopping app is specifically built around this. You know, you place your order, you say you're going to do drive-up. Then it prompts you to say, "I'm on my way to the store," so they can get ready and know you're coming in the next half hour or so. And then you get there, you park in a spot, and you put in the app what spot number you're in, and they've got your order. And you can also now get a Starbucks order with it or even do a return through the drive-up link spots. So it really reduces the number of customers in the store and it reduces the number of... The amount of time that customers are on-site because they can do it all in these individual drive-up spots. And again, in and out in less than.
But you have no history. This is all speculation in terms of Richampton Commons.
I'm sure that we have some. I mean, it's... We have almost two thousand stores, so it's hard to quantify the data for that. And this is really only in the last four, five years.
I do think, though, that so this area of the street next to the bollards is now a very different use than it was before because you have people coming, your staff, crossing that street regularly. So it's a big safety issue. And I think if you can get us any data on what's happening with the drive-in, because the drive-in is new for this particular site, that data will help us really and think about, help us thinking through the safety issue. It's really a safety issue at that point.
Oh, and I mean, that's.
The spots on the street are not just in the drawing. They're actually going to be on the street, right? Where you have.
Right.
And so between the bollards and the spots, you want to really alert people, "Do not park here. Get out of the way."
Which is the combination of the depressed curb, the striping shown, and then the bollards. They're all working in tandem with that exchange. You have employees, you have customers.
So some data would really support all of that.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. And we'll stick into it more. Like I said, we're working on the parking study and they've referenced some of that information. So I'm going to dig deeper with our team and see what we have.
So what else was there, Claire? The windows, the doors?
Let me... Yeah, the doors. So let me break that all up for the best time. We'll reschedule it out and then we'll schedule the pre-submission conference on the parking layouts for March twenty thirteen.
Okay, because if we have some statistics, it makes our job easier instead of speculating and guessing and... Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks very much. Should we have a pre-submission conference?
Yeah, schedule a pre-submission conference.
Okay, for what date, Claire?
March thirteenth.
March thirteenth. And a motion? Motion by Kate, second by George. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Six in favor, one absent. Thank you. Okay, we're going to close the afternoon planning session and go into a work session to discuss the best legislation. And Seth will present this. Seth Raze from Long-Term Planning. Welcome, Seth.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am going to lay out some maps of some potential best sites that we've identified.
So tell us what you're going to do and so that we can.
Certainly. So we have three bits of legislation before you. This is a town board referral. Long-range planning has put together a chapter in the Building, Construction and Energy Conservation Code, one, two, three, point three, nine, point three. We have also put together special exception standards under three thirty-one sixty-two twenty-one and a new Article seven A on energy storage overlay district. You'll see that the three proposed bits of legislation have gone out to their first public hearing. We have another public hearing scheduled for the twenty-fifth of this month. This day is actually the end of the moratorium for the battery energy storage. Chapter three fourteen has had three extensions to date. We are in the midst of another extension while we get this code finalized. The town board wishes your input. And I had thought that today would be a great chance for us to focus in on the special exception standards as that will be under your purview. That would mean that the tier two, there's a three-tiered system for these batteries. The largest would be from five megawatts to nineteen megawatts. That would be... That would need an energy overlay district landed by the town board. They would look at the Section three thirty, thirty-eight, four and the special exception standards to do so. They would look at the, the section three, three thirty, thirty-eight, four, and the special exception standards to do so. At which point you too would have oversight over a tier, the tier three as well. So you would also need to do planning board approval on tier three. Tier two will not go to the, the town board, will come directly to you. That tier two is up to five megawatts and down, and, and starting at six hundred kilowatt hours.
Okay, Seth.
Yes.
Please, baby steps. I asked for this work session.
Yes.
To inform the planning board as to what this legislation was about. So you've been close to it for months.
Months, I know.
Months and months and months. We have not.
Understood.
So please, uh, you know, look at the maps, tell us what an overlay district is and just some base, first basics.
I'll, I'll take a step, I mean.
You'll take a stab at that?
I'll take a stab at this because I asked him these questions and he, as, as you said, he's been knee-deep in this. So he knows it all. So we want the nitty-gritty questions. What happens is that, um, they will be allowed by special exception if they're a certain size in the LI forty, LI two hundred zoning district. And, and they are a certain size, right? There are six hundred watts to five hundred megawatts, right?
That's, that's the smallest? Is that the smallest?
No, that's the largest.
The largest.
That's, that's second largest, second largest. But that would be what you would do as of rights. Um, the application would be a type one action, that would be for pre-submission project. They'd have to meet the setbacks, they would, those, those are the ones you will see and you'll have the special exception application. The overlays would be a situation of, um.
LI and an opportu, and potentially opportunity sites.
Sand mines.
How is that defined?
The opportunity sites have.
That's a question I've.
Sure, and we could, we could look through, sure, there's avoidance areas and opportunity sites that are laid out in thirty-eight points.
That the town would, would then have to change the zoning to allow this.
Absolutely, it's a change of zone.
So your first tier is the yellow on the map?
No, these are all, these, uh, these are all the available, and actually the larger tier.
Okay.
Okay?
First, first tier, I believe, is in your homes.
This is, no, actually, so the smallest batteries, that would be a, a power wall, let's say. That is, uh, subject to building permits and electrical permits.
So instead of the generator. Instead of the generator, you have a, a battery pack in your house.
So they don't come before you?
They don't come before you. That's a building permit owner. That doesn't even, that isn't even rise to the level of a tier. We start tier one when you get eighty kilowatt hours.
If I may, Seth, people actually have those installed in their house right now in the town of Southampton, so that hasn't changed.
And it was not part of the moratorium. Only larger scale ones were.
Community. Okay, so tier one.
Eighty to six hundred, do we see those?
Eighty to six hundred is now tier one. You will have site plan approval. It will be required. It is allowed importantly in commercial zones. The idea here for the tier one is it can be an accessory to a commercial enterprise. If they need battery backup, perhaps a, a shopping center with refrigeration would like to have an emergency battery backup system. They would come before you for a site plan. It would be permitted.
Do we have a lot of those existing now?
No.
No, no, nothing exists.
Um, but there's been a moratorium.
Solar, but not the batteries.
Not the big ones.
Yeah.
So, just, just while we talk, so I just made a note to myself, Claire, that, that tier one language, which, you know, I was going to communicate with Seth, although I haven't made it to a long meeting, I would look at him and Seth would speak afterwards. So, you know, the idea, I, I think we really should also be adding, the same way we've added solar, solar, solar batteries as standard language and site plan approval. I think we should also add language suggesting the, the gap, the, suggesting that they install tier one, um, battery systems, battery backup systems. And the battery backup systems, again, it's kind of a misnomer because people tend to think that's, that's only a backup in case power fails. There's a multitude of very good uses that people can use these systems for peak shaving. They can take the systems offline very managed properly to, so when peak, between three and seven, they can actually come off the grid and use the power from batteries to power the facility and take that demand off. So, you know, that, that could have a very big impact on electricity usage over peak period. If enough, if enough facilities, you know, site plans and landowners and medical officers, everything that come before us for site plan approval. So really looking at how to install and use these systems correctly, not just as battery backup.
Yeah. Does LIFER allow that? Because with the generator, you, you have to.
If I may, it would depend on if it's working in parallel with the grid. Are we importing and exporting? Are we generating it at the site? So perhaps if your incentivization was saying, put solar on your, on your large commercial roof, you might make that next step if you wish. Put a battery as well to harness and do your peak shaving that you're saying would be, it's beneficial for the town.
Same concept as upgrading your septic system.
In a sense.
Right.
Upgrade your electrical system.
Although, although one disincentive, now I don't know if they'll do this on commercial, but for residential, I know once a year, LIFER takes whatever energy I have left over and takes it away. They don't let you store it. That's their rule. They reset.
They pay you pennies, but.
Pennies, but. So, and it might not exist for commercial, which would have more of a reason to keep that energy storage to do exactly what George has described, right? I, I don't know.
The idea is enough to take it back into the grid. You're actually using it on-site.
Yes.
Either use it or lose it.
Yeah, yeah, that, well, if they do the use it or lose it deal, it's a disincentive to store extra energy because somewhat you're going to lose it all.
Exactly.
Or whatever you're storing, right?
Yeah.
So I'm not sure on a commercial basis how, how PSENG deals with that.
Well, I'll just say that this is being done in many other parts of the country and if we're not doing it, we're behind.
It makes sense. I agree with you.
We are one thousand percent behind.
Yeah.
Even if, from the rest of, of New York State.
So, I have a question in terms of the zone where this is allowed, okay?
Certainly.
LI forty?
For the most, I would, yes, LI forty is where we are starting. This is what is before you. These are LI forty and LI two hundred.
And this is.
And opportunity sites. Again, depending on, that would be tier three and tier two. Tier one, we start to talk, that's the smaller commercial units, and then the residential, which are too small for us to be involved with.
So the LI forty.
Yes.
I mean, here on the east end of Long Island, we have LI forty zones smack up against residential zones. There's hodgepodge zoning everywhere.
So.
So what's going to happen?
The steering committee looked at that in depth. We did a whole GIS analysis. We pulled up, we had started with all the commercial and the LI. We then put, are these, do they share, share a property line with a residence? That would, that should exclude them, we thought. Then we actually branched that out to three hundred feet, and this is in the code and this is a very important part. That property line to property line, you, there will not be a battery energy storage system permitted if it's within three hundred feet of a single-family residence, a residential district, or an occupied community building. Property line to property line.
How did you get the three hundred feet?
The three hundred feet is, it came from an idea the fire marshal put forward. When there is a, an emergency of, uh, event, the air testing is done, they go out to three hundred feet. They take tests to see what the smoke, what the pollution levels toxicity is out to three hundred feet. So we assumed that there is a, an understanding that up to three hundred feet, there is a likely, uh, uh, an impact from a, from a combustion of a, of a battery. So we thought, take, anything within that area could be impacted, therefore we should exclude it. It would be three hundred feet, they would take a test, and if they found something, they would then test four hundred feet, and it would go further, further.
Are they only testing toxicity and not fire?
This would be the smoke. This would, that, that was the basis for the three hundred feet. The fires on, in these circumstances are, are pretty much contain, not contained, but they're at the containers itself. It is ablaze, but.
Inside the container.
And there, but there is a lot of language on limiting combustibles, even the fencing needs to be non-combustible. We have a twenty-foot clear, clearance around the cabinets or containers, uh, which is another provision. All batteries will be in these specialized cabinetry or containers, which is akin to an ISO maritime container.
So did you, do you think three hundred feet is sufficient?
I.
That's the information coming from the steering committee.
The steering committee decided, Southhold decided differently, but they're a much more agricultural town. And they said seven hundred and fifty. But then again, when we applied three hundred, we took an abundance of sites and we were left with thirty-two. Sites that would, where there would be, uh, except, potential sites for a battery energy storage.
But that's sort of like backwards mathematics to me.
Well, I'm just.
Right.
And you put additional safety distances and you get fewer sites. So maybe we should reduce the safety distance and get more sites. I don't think that that, to me, is not a safety equation, you know? Look to see where the maximum safety is.
I don't think that's what he's saying, though.
Yeah, what he's saying is when they did it, if we were, if we were to do five hundred feet, you probably would eliminate a lot of sites, right?
No, what he's saying is that when they did the first analysis, not putting in that three hundred feet, there were a number of sites. But once they did the three hundred feet, a lot of sites got eliminated from, from being.
So it would be good to see what these maps look like in comparison, three hundred, five hundred, seven fifty, and, you know.
Certainly. That was the job of the steering committee.
But for us to see.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get some comments back to the town board. So your concern is that you feel the three hundred is not sufficient.
Yeah, we need to know what, what is a better number? If Southhold picks seven fifty, three hundred seems like, hmm, that may not be enough. Now, if the fire marshal and that team weighed in heavily, I would assume they have a, a significant say. Then we need to know ration out for all.
So the, so the overall general statement is, is three hundred, three, three hundred feet sufficient? If it came from a fire marshal because of toxicity and fumes, is that sufficient? You know, one of the biggest problems that we had with all of this, why we had a moratorium, why we had the community up in arms legitimately, was the closeness, proximity of these units to residences. So, look, we're looking at the same thing with marijuana stuff, you know? Uh, so thi- this is really an important ingredient.
But it's not a three hundred foot bar.
No, no, I know.
It's a three hundred foot, their property line has to be three hundred feet from, from their property.
Okay, but some of these.
So there has to be something in between.
Some of these residential units, houses are, you know, they have a ten-foot setback.
Now, they're also limited to LI forty and LI two hundred zoning, not, so you can't put this in a.
Even an LI forty or two hundred, if it fell, if it had a property, a single-family residence within three hundred feet, it would not be allowed to have a battery energy storage. That's.
Period.
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 So there has to be, there has to be three hundred feet of industrial area between the use and another industrial area and then a residence.
Yeah, I tell anyone is the industrial.
This is not a three hundred foot setback.
The enterprise zone, you know how there's the circle of LI in the middle? In that zone, for example, only those in the center would be, because if three hundred feet around it is all LI and there's not a single-family residence. You get out to the outside perimeter and that three hundred feet oftentimes knocks away those LI sites.
So it measures from the.
From the property line of the LI and just doesn't matter if the next abutting is an LI. If there's a family residing on the next property over, the property line, that would, that's the exclusion.
So how many, how many parcels did you come up with?
Thirty-seven.
Yeah.
Where the thirty-two came out.
Thirty-two potential sites.
And those are on your maps.
And that's laid out here.
So this takes into account the reference to coastal evacuation routes?
Yes.
Do those have been mapped?
Uh, you know, that's a great question. I'll have to verify that.
Well, you know, when I was involved years ago, the, the mapping of coastal evacuation routes was somewhat up in the air because I think it, when you look at your requirements, uh, with regard to, they have to have direct frontage on an approved existing state, county, or town road having a right-of-way of at least fifty feet and with inadequate fire suppression. I think you're probably going to eliminate just about every, because I think twenty-four and twenty-seven are coastal evacuation routes, I believe. I believe County Road eighty is the coastal evacuation route.
Yeah. Excellent point.
They're going to have a really difficult time. But again, I think the coastal evacuation route was kind of fluid. My memory is those signs were put up like fifteen years ago and everybody wondered where they came from and where they went.
And do we have one?
Are they actually federally designated?
Right, but I think it was twenty-seven.
From county and town, I would think.
Right.
Do they have to be mandated by the state as well, Tom?
We never got to the bottom of it when I was looking at it, uh, but we just saw signs put up and we thought they were put up by the state and the county, but we really didn't.
Right, so critical.
I think an important point I'd like to bring up, uh, as we, I, I feel like we're dancing around a little bit, but I did want to say that a very important part is the peer review aspect. This was, uh, recommended by the New York State Intergovernmental Working Group that Hokel put together the moment these fires occurred, and there was this, the moratoriums were put in place. Uh, they have, they specifically state that there shall be a third-party peer review on all applications. And this is tier one, two, and three. We will have assistance from a third-party to review all of these, uh, applications and will verify that they are in compliance with. I have listed out in, in one of these sections, there's, I had roughly twenty-four different codes, standards, testing, uh, methods that are all accepted and it being updated constantly. They need, the, the equipment needs to be, uh, compliant with all those standards and codes, which is almost impossible for us to, to ascertain.
So who is this third party?
This is going to be something the applicant pays for. We are going to have to. The state is currently putting together a list of individuals, of technical experts, to assist us.
Like a consultant?
It is a consultant in, in, in many respects. NYSRDA has alluded to it. Have I found it? We're on kind of the cutting edge of this. The Clean Siding Team, which is, uh, a NYSRDA, uh, ORE, Office of Renewable Energy Siding, is doing this as we speak.
So is the code written in a way that it refers to changes? In other words, if the, the state makes significant changes to what they're requiring, do we have to then change our code or does it automatically update our code?
I, we have put in, for example, on those twenty-one codes and standards as amended. I have the intergovernment, inter-agency working group, its draft recommendations for another six months. We have adopted them as a town, or at least we're proposing to adopt those recommendations as they stand. There may be more, which we would have to then fold into our code.
And do those include things like, uh, non-combustible containers and non-combustible fencing?
It does, yes, and that has found its way. There are sixteen different recommendations, all of which enhance signage, uh, again, yeah, the clearing and non-combustible fencing. Um, a big one is a, a network, uh, or a remote center that has twenty-four, seven surveillance of the site. Fifteen minutes notification of an emergency with a four-hour, uh, you must be on-site. Someone, a designee has to be on-site within four hours, which we could change if we wanted to.
Um, regarding the independent review, is it written that the, um, applicant hires that person or that they pay for the town to hire someone to represent a review on the town's behalf?
It's written that they pay, they give the money to the town. The town hires who they believe.
The same way we do. Okay.
Right. They, they don't bring their own consultant.
Thank you.
So what's an opportunity site?
An opportunity site. Well, let's take it right from the code then.
We covered LI forty and we covered commercial.
Sand mines.
Sand mines is, is the big one, yeah. So unfortunately, you know, you know that they are often, uh, zoned residential. So this was an opportunity for us, maybe the town board to consider, elect. They, this is only for their consideration, the sand mines as potential sites. Uh, you also have publicly-owned properties, designated brownfields, and existing community, uh, distributed generation sites, which would be like the transfer station as a CDG.
So how many of those sites did you map out on your maps?
These, uh, that, the, the interesting thing about an energy overlay is they can land wherever the town board, after looking at these things, and, and if it's one of these opportunity sites. I don't know all those different opportunity sites.
Okay, because those are pretty specific.
So we should map.
Yeah, you should map the opportunity sites for sure.
The thirty-two that.
Oh, they're here. It's orange, right? Orange is the sand, potential area, uh, area. Yes, they're all.
I, I, I would say some of them are there, but I don't believe every, there are sand mines here and there, but I don't. I, I, I would say some of them are there, but I don't believe every, there are sand mines here and there, but I don't.
But they also have municipal yards in this one?
Yeah.
Right, municipal yards.
And it is true, they are quite, some of them are.
The one where they would land it, the town board would land it. And the yellow would be the potential for the tier two on your behalf with a special exception.
So municipal yards, is that a category?
So it's municipally-owned properties.
Okay, so there's your municipal yard right in the heart of Bridgehampton. So does that mean that that's an opportunity site?
Uh, it would, it would be, then you look, you would consult your avoidance areas. If it's within 300 feet of a residence, no, it is not a.
Then it's bumped down.
Then it's.
That's why I'm asking that it should at least be, well, you say it is mapped.
Yeah, I, I would, I just hesitate to say everything is on the maps. Uh, I, there are other municipally-owned, I, I believe, sites. Um, this was, this thing has gone through many, many iterations and.
Because that's a basic blueprint, you know, to have a look at a map.
And what, this, this says municipal yards, which is different from municipally-owned property. So technically, that should be every, every playground and, you know.
The town owns a lot of different.
It's not defined.
So for example, I, you know, I know that this, this will be, this will be an issue here, which is the land quiet. And it's still on there, but that has residential property next to it, so that even if it's on there, that'll never. And the reason I say that, because the village of Southampton Beach has a schedule of public hearing to review that lease and probably go through the proper process to get that lease out there, and I don't know why.
And I think to George's point, I was, when we say municipally-owned properties, the question of was that municipally owned by the town of Southampton or owned by a different municipality? So I don't know whether you need to.
Yeah, it does need to be tightened up. I, I understand, I, note taken.
Either whatever the board decides, but I think it should be.
Loose term to say municipally-owned.
Right. And the.
Which is municipal.
The transfer stations are included in this list, is, uh, is that what you said?
Potential.
Potential, opportunity sites.
Potential what?
Opportunity sites, right?
Oh, transfer station?
Transfer stations, they're, because they're rarely next to, immediately next to them. That's interesting.
I, I mean, at a certain point, we are, we are, we're trying to allow for, to best to be cited somewhere.
Some are, some aren't close to municipal, there are residential management sites, right? Some are, some are.
How does this fall in with the town's wider planning around energy, you know, as a resource?
Well, we. Certainly, well, we have the Climate Action Plan, we're with, we're on, we're trying to reduce our emissions by 2040 down to net zero. Uh, so that is certainly in, in line with our comprehensive plan, the Climate Action Plan being amended to that. Uh, the Sustainable 400 also talks about microgrids and, and, uh, changing the way we, how we get our energy. Uh, I think the community is behind the green energy transition. That's my understanding, has, has it been codified completely? No, not yet, but, uh, we are trying to reduce our emissions.
This is one of the, the pegs that is a challenge to actually make happen.
If renewable energy, the generation of renewable energy is very reliant on batteries because of its variabilities, variability, excuse me. So that is why we want to allow, give, uh, an opportunity to batteries. However, I should say this is energy storage. It does not necessarily have to be lithium ion. There are other ways of doing energy storage.
Yes, that's what I was just going to say, say that, that's important.
Compressed air, there is kinetic energy, you can spin up a spring in the daytime and release it for the energy, it's, it's stored in, in the evening.
And the code is, the code should be written so it allows for.
It's purposely vague.
Various types of energy storage, plus even for battery storage, for different chemistry. You really don't know what's going to come with battery storage, right?
That's right, lithium could be something else.
Salt in the future.
Iron and air is.
So it should, should indicate that.
And you.
Okay, now, we have about, really, five minutes, I think, left here because we have a whole agenda to go through. Right, but, but, um, we can continue this.
SECRE is required for any of these, right?
Yes, it is, one of the provisions is.
Type one action.
Type two and type.
A couple of comments.
Yes, please.
The first, um, I believe the tier three requires that you have to have solar or some sort of energy to put into the batteries.
Yes.
So it's, it's not.
Co-located?
Yeah, thank you, I was stumbling with the words.
It's quite all right, I've played with the word for a long time.
Um, so it's not just, it, it's a combination, so it's, it's going after energy as well as then storing it.
Quite right.
So it's not a case where the applications we had, where they were going to take the power from LIPA when it was cheap and sell it back when it was, so it's, it's not just an arbitrage facility. And my second point is, of the 32 that were, we think we could do, how many of them have, have you looked at whether they have the type of linkage to LIPA to actually make it efficiently inexpensive?
That was, uh, one of the key undertakings of the steering committee. We, we consulted what's called the hosting capacity map. We looked at all the distribution lines. We were able to see what kind of voltage, uh, they had, what capacity was for charging and discharging on those lines. And because we knew it wouldn't make sense to have, uh, allow for a bunch of areas where there was not enough grid, uh, to actually take the energy a- and, uh, put it back. So it was part of our analysis. Um, the developers, on the other hand, have, have stressed that th- they don't see the, the potential sites as being adequate. And they stress that interconnection alone can cost upwards of $2 to $3 million, even for a modestly-sized, uh, battery energy storage. And then you would have something, uh, called a transmission bridge, which is where they put an underground cable, and those can be, uh, $5 million a mile. So these things get really, really expensive the further you get away. That makes the train, uh, be- because the transmission line follows the, the railroad, that's a key area. Uh, anything over 10 megawatts needs to connect on Long Island to the transmission lines. So we tried to, we, we took these things into account as we developed sites. And I would just add to your, the co-location, uh, aspect, that the battery energy storage is limited by how much energy is generated by whichever renewable is there. If it generates 5,000 kilowatt-hours a day, on average, they would be allowed a battery that would store 5,000 kilowatt-hours.
So electric car plugins are not involved in any of this?
Uh, we did put a, we did put an exemption, let's say there was a car mechanic that had a bunch of batteries at his site and he was working on electric vehicles, that those would not be considered the, the battery energy storage. That's about the owner interlink, the only interlinkage with EVs.
So you want to just summarize what your issues are to, to date? I mean, I know there's a public hearing coming that.
There is another one on the 25th at 6:00 PM, yes.
You had one on the 11th, right?
That's correct.
So there was coastal evacuation routes, there was, um, the consideration of, um, 500-foot.
Mm-hmm. The 300-foot of the property.
And just explaining the, what the difference of the maps would look like.
Okay.
Definition of municipal yards or unis- municipally-owned property?
And is municipal just the town or the villages?
Right.
Yes.
Tighten that up, okay?
You support peer review, though, right? That's a good idea, right? So we should say that? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, no different than when we bring a consultant in for traffic, I mean, the.
Absolutely.
We don't, we don't have the expertise and I don't think anybody in town hall does.
Right.
And you said all of these would be considered a type one on your SECRE?
For type two and type three, yes.
Tier, tier one.
Can you just say, yeah? The words matter at this point. Tier one, two, and thirty.
Just tier two and three are type one.
Are type one.
But tier three has to get approved by the town board before it comes to us, so.
Right.
The town board would carry over your SECRE analysis at that point, no?
Then you'd be involved agencies, because you'd still have to review it.
Okay.
Okay, great. At least we gave them some guidance.
Yeah, but it's incomplete, so please tell them they're still reviewing this, this is not a final.
Yes, so we are, we are extending the moratorium for three months. That's the, or the intention at least, uh, it's up to the public hearing, uh, while we refine this, so.
Okay.
Do you want to say that, that you want another opportunity?
Yes, absolutely, we do.
This is initial comments about, you're gonna take it, you're gonna have your next meeting, you're gonna.
I mean, I, I personally would say that I think it's, it's way, 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 way better.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it's well thought of, but it's a lot of information.
It is.
Well, and like, this is a, like, codifying a centralized strategy to taking pressure off of the power grid, but they could also consider codifying decentralized strategies, like what George said, and in residential, especially high square-footage residential.
Well, yeah, I think your point is like encouraging, we should make it encouraging smaller.
Stop encouraging and start mandating.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, encouraging, yeah, or mandating.
So is that zero to 60?
Yeah, I would say the town needs to be careful about mandating or even encouraging, because they do, there are problems with these batteries, it can't be ruled out. However, on that, that point, Green Mountain, uh, from Vermont had bought batteries for every residence and they used them in concert to manage their electricity. So it is not unheard of.
Or you can do it via the design, you know? I don't know how that fits in with code right now, with the building code, that they have to achieve a certain, um, designation for, you know, lead or, you know, for.
It's where for. It's basically requiring, right now, solar and geothermal for bigger houses, that, that's.
Right, okay.
You have to, it doesn't say you have to do that, but in order to make the, the leads re- the rating, you have to do it for the larger houses.
I think one of the, one of the other points was to be flexible in terms of amending the legislation as technology changes.
Yes, we tried to put in as much possible about updates. Any, any updates become part of, part of the code. We did a lot of adoption by reference. This space is highly regulated by many, many different standards.
Yeah, that's, that's what I, where I thought it had gone, but I.
Now, does everybody feel comfortable passing this without seeing it in?
Can I just throw in one other, and I don't know if it'll work or not, but you have the designated coastal evacuation routes. There's no mention of the railroad tracks. I think some consideration should be to how close you want to put for these two rail, a functioning railroad.
Understood, but again, just mentioning the transmission lines being.
Right.
Running, that, that is.
That's true.
The grid.
That's true, they do run right along the tracks. So in one sense, it encourages you to put it near the railroad tracks?
Absolutely.
You have to connect it, that's fair, but it's still can be setback.
Yes. Okay, it's certainly worth thinking about.
And there were three pieces of legislation, I think we focused on one, or we kind of put them all together in our discussion?
Um, so yeah, there's the building code, right?
Yeah, there's 1, 2, 3, 39, uh, there's 162, special exception, and then there's the energy overlay, the big picture overarching.
The other line in many of the zones.
TB.
So, so what is this that we just reviewed?
Well, we were kind of focused on special exception standards, your, which is under your purview.
Okay.
How you can refine what you were going to be doing.
So maybe we can, in our next session, have a work session to discuss the other aspects of it?
Certainly.
And also, there's not, no mention in here of LIPA. I mean, have you worked with LIPA? Is LIPA going to invest in additional, uh, grid, um?
That, we, we had Gary Stevens, uh, we were, thankfully, we had him on our steering committee. He's a VP with LIPA. He gave us a lot of good, great advice. We did have NYSRDA as well, uh, and some other industry experts. Uh, it is their mandate to upgrade the transmission and distribution lines as, that's why they're there. That's why we pay our rates.
Can, can it be more specific than that? Because they've been saying that for years and there's never been an upgrade, has there?
There has been.
Well, Deerfield, for example, is getting a, a, there's a brand-new run going on Deerfield Road. I know they continually are upgrading, but I can't speak to.
They did the upgrade from this, from this Southampton Village. That's where we have that visual benefit analysis adjustment, the scuttle hole road people that I paid for. So that was done several, three, four years ago. There has been some upgrades, but not.
And every year they come out with a, it's a yellow book, I think it's called, but it is their plan of action for the upcoming year. Uh, they assess where they are and what they want to do.
And so does it coordinate with all of this? Or are we talking, are we speaking in silos?
No, no, they have been on board. I, they, uh, Mr. Stevens did actually see this code himself and we spoke about it together and it's, it's, he gave us our, his advice as well. So we are working with LIPA, we're, we're actively trying to work with, uh, developers, NYSRDA. We are getting as much feedback as we can. It's not a foregone conclusion.
Okay.
Uh, so one last question for me. You've mentioned that there would be remote access camera.
Remote operation center.
For all three tiers?
Uh, that would be predominantly.
Seems two and three.
Two and three are the ones.
And is that 24/7?
Exactly. That can be a, a network, uh, there's a network and a, and a remote operator.
Okay.
Um, there's some, there's some provisions on both of those.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, I'm going to request that you type up this referral and bring it back to us later this afternoon so we can vote on it.
Okay.
And then we can move on.
Okay.
All right?
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Seth, thank you, Claire.
Thanks, Claire.
You're welcome.
You want to go right into Watermill Building? Oh, so I have to close out of the work session and go back into the afternoon session? Um, which we're doing, and Claire, do you want the Watermill Buildings to apply?
Yes.
Do we have applicants here?
We do. Yeah. Do you want to do this stuffing first, the site plan? Do you want to do it together?
I think we should do it together.
It's together, I mean, it's like the front and back of the hand, right?
It really is, but they are two different reports, so, and the deadline's not today, so.
You just want to review it?
I just want to review it, it's the feedback new and we can tighten things up.
Okay.
So.
Want to give us your name for the record, please?
Yes, uh, David, Robert Faschetti, Faschetti.
Robert Faschetti and.
It's a yellow from the record room.
Look what you're doing, the two, right?
Yeah, so what's the second, what's the second one?
So it's Watermill Buildings by number two or it's number seven?
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Um, Federal Trade applied for the real estate property.
Is it Farrell?
Yeah, F A R R.
We're familiar with that name.
Not yours.
Not yours, but the name. Okay, so we're going to do the subdivision first?
Oh, yeah, we can do that.
Let's do the two-lot subdivision.
Yeah, like it's got the comments, you know, pre-submission is more of like the feedback. I just like the overall plan of, um, if you want to take a look at that, that's got everything on it.
Okay, so Claire did a draft of this, so we're just discussing the draft now and then she'll bring it back in two weeks and we can vote on it.
Yeah.
So this is.
Do you want to send Watermill plan on there?
Yeah, I'm going to, just, I want to pass up these out. So this is the pre-app report and these are the, uh, the comments that are attached with that.
I have a note that I didn't see the report just the result on the site plan.
Yeah, you didn't, I did not give you the pre-submission report and I forgot to email to you and I emailed it to him last night.
So I'm not.
Yes, the pre-submission report is, you did not give.
Okay. Okay, Claire, you're on.
I'm on, okay. This is the overall site plan, it's got both the subdivision shown and the buildings, so I think it's effective showing everything. Here's the overall site. Okay. So it's 5.9 acres, it's improved with existing buildings for a home improvement rental equipment center. It's HB zoning district, 110 Montauk Highway. Um, it's a two-lot subdivision proposed, so it's minor. It is an unlisted action. Technically, if it was just looking at a vo- you know, in a vacuum, it would be unlisted. However, because the new project generates more than 50 parking spaces, we would be way over and then the whole thing is looked at as a type-one action. We'd be doing SECRE on both actions, so. Um, so the town comprehensive plan doesn't make your specific recommendations for the needy area, uh, but generally with commercial areas, the mess plan, which is the buildings in the front and the parking and the side and rear and cross-access, I should add that. So I just gave you the aerial, um, and a little overview of the site plan, standard plan. Um, now, the code has been revised very recently to require. Now, the code has been revised very recently to require a cluster plan and any circumstances, even commercial.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but in this case, you didn't find that there was any significance warrants, like no agricultural, no wetlands, no issues. So you waived the cluster requirements. It is commercial, so there's no park requirements. Um, the public hearing was held on January ninth and no comments were received during the hearing nor during the provided ten day written comment period. Uh, the referrals, I have them separate.
Fires first?
Yes. Fire first?
In your package.
In your package, fires first first?
No.
Okay.
Didn't say much, and then fire district.
Right. Yeah, Tom Houghton said the monuments on the subdivision, that's a typical requirement. Um, the fire marshal, fire apparatus, um, no, not relevant comments. Uh, fire district said as a result of the nature of use of the property, the board requests installation of a hydrant at the westernmost entrance. Um, New York State DEC, these are comments related to the northern long eared bats, um, and the clearing window. Conservation said the tract is located within two hundred feet landward of the nearest wetlands. As tract is located in the town's high priority water quality improvement zone and the suburban county designated in Cox Bay and Trueteria's watershed. The new commercial building should be serviced with a nitrogen reducing IA system. Landscape plans and a modified street tree planting specifications need be forward for review and comments. New commercial buildings should be equipped with solar panels in order to reduce energy demands. Okay. So the recommendations related to subdivision. Um, so in order to proceed, the subdivision variance will be required from the zoning board appeals to permit the existing square footage to remain on the smaller lot. The applicant is proposing to demolish the rear buildings and covered storage area and building one new twenty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-five square foot building for storage.
Is there a reason why the lots are being subdivided?
Oh, is there a reason, uh, there a reason, yeah, uh, the property is being subdivided is to utilize the, uh, the unused area on the east side for, uh, for the plumbing building that we're proposing in the site.
And that couldn't be built without the subdivision?
No, it was not without the subdivision.
But you need to get a variance for the other lot?
Yes, yes. Not for the lot itself, but we don't, the subdivision doesn't require any, uh, area variance as far as the size of the lot.
Fifteen thousand square feet.
It's the fifteen thousand.
It's the code for highway business.
And then, um, number two, lot number one is currently improved with existing seventeen thousand three hundred eighty-six square foot building. I should say uncovered storage area. And approximately, and that, that number is wrong. It's twenty-six thousand six hundred and forty-seven square feet of building. That twenty-six four nine seven five is that new building, they're building in the back.
So this is twenty-six?
Twenty-six, six four seven. That's what I got from the numbers when looking at the site plan. Uh, lot number two is currently utilized as outdoor storage and parking access with the subdivision proposed lot is set to add to a second, second curb cut, and this is why I put discussion. Tom, Tom had pointed out that, that there was a DOT memo, right?
Yes.
Related to this.
Yes, we submitted last time. And I also have the, um, application that prompted the DOT memo, which we realized that, we, we proceeded a little early with it, uh, to get the DOT's comments. Uh, we had passed that out, but we didn't actually pass out, which I can, I can pass out now, which is the application to DOT, which also includes our DOT consultant, Ron Hill's, um, explanation, uh, you know, of trip generation and, um, you know, his general, um, uh, analysis of the, uh, of the additional curb cut.
You need a magnifying glass, or it's four point tight.
Yes. The, the consultant's comments are the last page and are regular.
It's mouse-pit. Not user friendly. Nope.
But really, at this stage, you know, we, uh, we have the initial comments from the DOT. Uh, they were all positive. There was no concern as far as proximity to other curb cuts. There was no concern after our consultant had pointed out uh, the expected trip generation and everything else. There was no concern about, um, you know, uh, traffic study or anything like that.
There's the DOT comments, but they were addressed to the applicant and not you. That's why they're not.
Like I said, we, we were trying to just be proactive and to.
Understand, but we still have our issues about this subdivision. When we are trying to limit the traffic and access to, to twenty-seven. You know, you've designed it in such a way that you've not even entertained a common entrance into this parcel for circulation. I mean, these are all planning issues that it's our obligation to bring to you and for you to entertain.
We have, and, and Vinnie here can speak to that even more, but we have entertained every different way to enter this property, to move around the property. One of the things that we passed out previously that I could pass out again is our, um, map of interior flow. Uh, a lot of consideration into, uh, as far as how to move around within the site and, and which obviously springs off of the entrance into the site. One of the reasons that we went ahead with a DOT consultant early on was, was we understand it's a concern to the town, but the real numbers that the DOT consultant puts together and that presents the DOT and their response, also the critical numbers that we're talking about, if the town is concerned, it seems like the concern should, you know, we should be looking at those numbers to see how much of a concern it is and, and, you know, how our, how our layout, um, you know, addresses those and.
I, I understand that. I understand that. You know, if in the future the berm here should disappear, you've got dozens of cars in the front.
We're happy to have something saying the berm stays.
You know, everything that we tried, strive for here, parking in the rear, closing off access to twenty-seven. This is just contradictory to that. In addition to thousands of square feet, over fifteen thousand square foot limit for highway business. So.
And we will, we will speak to the zoning board about that. A lumberyard, not just this lumberyard, but any lumberyard use is, uh, is very different in, in the sense of parking. The rear yard needs to be used much more than, say, a Target or anything else where parking in the rear is just parking in the rear. Here, there's a lot of activity in the rear. There's safety issues. There's, uh, customers going back to pick up products.
I understand that.
It's a very different animal. As far as the berm, we, we enjoy, we like the berm too. We, we're happy to make that a permanent, um, uh, part of the property. What you have in front of you there is the existing circulation pattern on the first sheet and the proposed on the second sheet. To, to further expand upon what Rob is saying here, similar to this board's application with the pre-app. I'm getting guidance from this board with respect to the development of this property and how it proceeding. We felt it be applicable here to go to the DOT as well to get their comments. By no means in going to them first was it our intentions to circumvent this board's concerns. And should there be, uh, traffic impacts that this board feels are potentially impacting what we're proposing here? Uh, I'm confident that we can demonstrate to the board that what we're proposing here uh, will not have a significant impact to what is presently out there. As I said, by no means were we looking to circumvent here.
We haven't seen from you to us any possible flow with a center entrance with some of the recommendations that we've made. Even if it's just a tissue overlay to say, look, we've looked at that and here's how it would work. Nothing. We've had only this to reinforce your position. So I'm giving you some pushback on it because we go on and on with it.
You may have investigated that, but it would be good for us to see that so that we can come up to speed with how you've come to this hard decision.
I understand. I probably, when we submitted that last time in, in response to those questions, when we proceeded from that meeting to the public hearing, my understanding was that there was a, a level of comfort that that had been, um, you know, investigated and that it was, you know, going to stand the test of further, uh, development from the professionals as far as, um, you know, the, the full application to the DOT and the full site, uh, site plan and subdivision, uh, to this board. But certainly, you know, we, we want to show the board whatever they need to see to make a decision. I wasn't, we weren't trying to withhold that. I just misunderstood that when we had proceeded from the meeting that we presented the color coded map to the public hearing. I didn't realize you were still looking for an alternate submission. So we'll, we'll discuss and, you know, we'll.
Well, just looking at what you've submitted, I'm looking at it, the rest of the board is looking at it. The eastern portion of that building is totally constrained. You have virtually no setback. There's, you have pedestrian circulation. Is that what the green line is? Customer, customer path?
Their car path.
Their car paths. Up in the top of, there's a legend with respect to the color of the vehicle.
It says truck pass, cuthbert pass, proposal.
If I may, uh, the red dotted line in that drawing in the before portion shows a lot of intersecting of customer traffic and truck traffic per loading.
Are we looking at this, this document?
Yeah, the first, the first one, the SK one.
This is.
It's an existing and proposed.
Yeah, so you're going to see red lines and green lines intersecting. And in the, in the proposed circulation, we're really separating customer traffic and truck traffic, which we think makes for a much safer scenario and a more efficient scenario. So right now, as we're unloading trucks and customers are getting their stuff, the contractors, they're intersecting, right? So with this newer building, customers come in on the right, they go through that new particular building and they exit. No U-turns, minimal intersection, truck loading unloaded. In the prior scenario, people are making U-turns in the yard and we have truck traffic and customer traffic intersecting. So.
Yes, cause you have the space. That's why they do it. It's wide open. Is this what you're talking about?
Another reason we're doing it is these buildings in the back all face, I think, north-south. With this new longer east-west building, it's a much smoother circulation pattern for both customers and trucks.
I understand that. I understand.
And that eliminates the U-turns and the intersections.
When you're talking trucks, you're talking about trucks bringing in new material.
Yeah, just roll armor.
Not, not, not the, the guy, the contractor who has a truck. Cause, because with, they're both trucks.
Not the guy with the truck. The red is the guy with the semi bringing material in and the green is the guy with the.
No, the east-west orientation for those buildings makes sense. There's no doubt about it.
As well as our own trucks being loaded.
What I was commenting to you about people making U-turns is because you have the space to do it. People will do, people will make U-turns if there's open. That's what I'm talking about. Now that's, now that's constricted, right? With your, your plan.
Yes, with the proposed, yes.
So I think what you're hearing is it's very tight on the east side of building two because of the subdivision of the two lots and the size of the building on parcel two. So the circulation for both green and red is tight on that east side. And then also looking at one curb cut and we would like to see that ultimate plan.
Yeah. Um, we've gone out to fifteen thousand square feet because that's the limit, right? Is there any possibility that you could bring it in smaller than that? Can you reorient the building so that the smaller side is, uh, short end is, is facing the road? I mean, there are lots of ways to massage this site plan.
Sure. Well.
To accommodate what you want and what we're trying to look for.
So what we will do is we'll do some sketch studies illustrating various layouts to, and, and hopefully that will give you a little more context for how we arrived at this. We'll, we'll do the work and we'll, we'll, we'll share with you.
Am I correct that Speedway is just to the east?
Yes.
Yeah, there's that.
Yes.
Speedway and then the, and then, um.
The, the several.
Scuttlewood Business Park and it does have cross access.
There's a previous cross access from another, uh, application for this board?
Yes.
Yes. So certainly we can connect to Speedway. The two buildings in the rear, I'd have to pull their site plans. Hard to tell what they have planned for the back if it would bud right into parking, but we're open, you know, we're, we're open to, you know, whatever's required. The building to the front on the west side, their whole driveway situation doesn't go up to that property line. But again, if, if the building feels like it would be helpful.
There's cross access on the front building that is created touch landscaping and it shows it on its site plan.
Right, that's the one, yes, that's the one that's already.
In the back, clear, in the back of that thing?
That new development to the back has a retaining wall that's built along the common property line.
Mm-hmm.
That was part of their site plan approval.
And so you think it doesn't match up?
Yeah, grade wise it doesn't. I don't know how, anyway.
You know, how high that retaining wall is in?
What's that?
How high, how high is that retaining wall?
I want to say it's more than four feet, that's for sure.
Okay.
On the east side.
On the east side.
So you see the existing building near the roadway? That's the darker one?
Yeah.
And the buildings in the back are different heights, all oriented in, but we think the wrong direction.
So you want to take those out and build this new building?
Horizontally.
Yeah, I get that.
In terms of the new building, like, that's really where we're proposing. You know, we can study different orientations, configurations.
And do you need fifteen thousand square feet? I mean, you've maxed it out.
I think what you're talking, you're talking about the new building on parcel one.
For which building?
I'm saying, I'm saying there's nowhere else to put the new building.
We're talking about the new building, uh, the plumbing building on parcel two.
Yeah, there's nowhere else to put that building.
But the size of it could be slightly reduced to improve the circulation pattern on the inside.
Circulation, to improve circulation around. I mean, the circulation on this site, I would think for you is critical. You've got trucks coming in, going out.
And, and again, the way this configured, we think it's a, it's a, an amazing improvement in circulation. We, we think our customers are going to like this. It's safer, it's better for building. But it, it, we will do the work and, you know, we don't want to come here and try and jam through a single option. We'll do the work and come back.
Your new building is the, you know, the new old building is a beautiful building. It's a wonderful addition. The berm is great. But, you know, we have to look at not only what's here now, but what's going to come in the future. And you've got all the parking in the front. Understand you need to keep that rear clear because you've got a lot of cir, you've got vehicles moving around.
We did try to use a little bit of parking in the back of the new building, a little on the side.
It's very.
Tried, yeah.
Material storage area.
You know, part of where we showing this sector's entrance is, is, is there with the relationship to the Rosehill Road that's on the southeast side of the road. That, that's, that's very critical from an engineering and alignment standpoint.
Tell me where you're talking.
Rosehill Road. See where Rosehill Road is.
The new entrance is, is.
It's going to be directly opposite.
What you are, when you, the reason why you create intersections, you know, and why you don't want offsets is you avoid conflicts with maneuvers in.
We're aware of that, Mr. Guardiola.
Okay.
We're aware of that.
Well, I, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Point that out to you why.
One other thing, if it's not clear, is our plumbing business right now is embedded.
It's in the building.
It's in the building. But our plumbing customers come through a lumber, like a Home Depot type retail.
I have done it. I didn't mind it so much. I thought it was interesting.
Also, you know.
I love, I love hardware stores.
Racking requirements, how we rack and store for plumbing is different than how we rack and store for plumbing.
So you want, you want to carve it off. I understand that. It's a question of a site, you know, that needs to be improved for circulation, size, et cetera.
Yes, and, and we hear all of your comments about circulation and we'll.
Okay.
I can just speak, and I appreciate you, you submitted this additional information on the work permit and everything. Now, Ron Hill done engineering. You said he wrote the narrative on the last page. He says in here that, uh, the IT, ITE land use code, building materials lumber store was selected as the best fit. That yields an estimate of a hundred and forty-three trips per hour. He backs that down by saying because this will be primarily plumbing supplies that it won't generate as much traffic as that, uh, ITE estimate.
It's also plumbing supply that already exists there. These are a lot of customers that are already going to that site.
So he's, he's backing it down from a hundred and forty-three trips per hour to forty trips per hour on a Saturday PM. You know, that, I've worked with Ron a long time. I have great respect for Ron, but, you know, he's cutting the estimate from the ITE manual by, you know, seventy percent or sixty percent.
Isn't it based on the name, feeling the category was, was that approximation?
It was, right. It was, yeah.
I think.
It was building material, what is it? Lumber and building materials is the category. Building materials and lumber store was selected as the best fit. Maybe there. Maybe there is no category for, you know, plumbing supplies.
Well, that's, that's why he kind of interpolated based upon what.
Right.
Again, unfortunately Ron was not available today. Uh, he's out of the country, but most certainly will be before you on this application.
I mean, it's a judgment call he's making here. You know, as I said, I've worked with Ron a lot, I have a lot of respect for him. But he's saying instead of a hundred and forty-three trips, which is what's in the manual for this category, he's saying forty trips. That's a whole lot less.
It should be a traffic study, right?
Well, that's what I was going to ask, is, have any existing counts been done, you know, at your existing store to see how much traffic it is generating?
Do you have any current data?
Okay. Seeing how much traffic's currently being generated might be, we haven't asked for a traffic impact study, right?
Not yet, that's, this is the time to do it, so.
Right, that's it, you know.
We would do this and, and I think in this case, if you do, then you would have, you'd hire consultants.
I understand that's a possibility. I just would point out that based on Ron's analysis that, that he submitted, the DOT didn't push back on that in his, his estimation in their report.
Gotcha, okay.
You know, um, you applied for commercial access highway work permit, you know. And you did include this, which I'm sure is good.
Yes, yeah, I meant to say their report was based off of that analysis in that application.
I think Jackie is talking about, you know, the, the DOT doesn't concern themselves a whole lot with land use aspects. They look at driveways. And they, and they gave you several sheets of technical specs of how to build the driveway and the sidewalks properly. But they're not really in the business of what we're in the business of, which is projecting out and saying, you know, the, what's the rate of development? Is it too intense for the property? You know, the county and the state don't really get in that.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know, Claire, you've been doing this a lot longer.
I agree, they don't do that.
I mean, I don't know, there's many times, Jackie, where they've come back and said, no.
No, they, they say you shall have one curb cut or two curb cuts. That's, that's the extent of what they say.
No left-hand turn?
Yeah.
So I don't think they're doing a, you know, qualitative kind of evaluation that we're required to do, so.
Based on, they do it based on the type of use though, so they're considering it based on.
George.
You know, it's, it's some land use is involved and they're not looking at it like.
They're also saying, okay, this guy's got two hundred and fifty foot of frontage. We typically allow, you know, a curb cut for each business, you know what I mean?
It's a formula.
It's a formula, yeah. But that's, I think this warrants a type, type one, I want to put that in there.
Yes, and as been said, we're not trying to replace this board's review with the DOT's review. So we understand that those are separate.
Can we also get, before the next discussion, a comment from the consultant, Ron, as to why he lowered those numbers so dramatically?
Well, you can have them come for the next meeting, Dave.
Well, not until we get our own traffic. I think it's.
Premature?
Yeah, premature.
I think we should get some actual traffic.
We'll be back on the twentieth.
We need to look at our own traffic.
So we don't want to, yeah, we don't have to, because we want to get a traffic study. He's going to prepare a traffic study, obviously, and then we would have the review and we'll go from there.
And is there a problem with the western driveway? Because the DOT does mention can't encroach on the neighbor's property.
There's a slight encroachment of about four feet.
Couple feet, yeah.
Right.
So we're, uh, we're going to have to shift that a little bit.
You are going to have to move that a little.
Yeah. I, I think it's an area of about twenty square feet that we're going to have to eliminate.
Right, same on that.
Um, I think you touched on a lot of the site plan issues too, so which is great. Um, I just described, I haven't given it to you, so let me do that.
Also, when you're, when you're looking at the reconfiguration of things, I think the look's in the material storage area and see if it's possible at all to push it back and not be in a.
That is, uh, the idea of that is a, it's nothing that's, it stands there for any extended period of time. It's unload the truck and then load it in the building. Or a truck comes in and it's just to be an organized spot to unload a truck, but then it's, it's never going to stay there. It's just a transitionary spot.
Okay, but even if you could move it further.
Yeah, no, I'll still consider that, I just want to make sure you understood what, what it was.
Yeah, okay, I didn't realize it was, it was sort of just a dumping area.
It's just a transitionary.
But what it'll give you is it'll give you a little bit more room to play with your new building. Okay, Claire, so.
The property line, the new property line.
I guess you want that, so, you know, a big tractor trailer comes in or a flatbed with pallets, right? And it needs to have proximity to this lumber storage and to the plumbing storage area.
Yes, to be able to put on racks and everything else.
So.
Yeah. So what are we doing, Claire?
Um, so this is the phase submission report. This is be the site plans when you proceed to that point.
Which we just did, right?
Yes, you talked about it. I just describe everything again, um, describe the application, the type one action. Um, it is located in a near state archaeologically sensitive area, so the area, um, would be subdivided and improvements would have to have a phase, um, one A and B and the traffic study.
Okay, so does this list our concerns?
It really does, but let me take a look at it. Um, I think you've seen the appearance of the building before, but I know I'll get that, we'll look at it the next time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, but yeah, I'll incorporate all your comments in it.
Building, the building looks good, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll do the comments, you know, you want to retain the bumper in the front, those kinds of things.
And site circulation.
And site circulation, particularly to the east.
So I'll, I'll, I'll incorporate that, you will see this in it. Okay?
Okay.
For consideration.
All right, so when are, so are you going to bring some tissue overlays?
Yes, yes, we'll bring something back to show you our process on how we landed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for all your time.
Sorry, for one.
Of course.
I mean, I'm just looking at your situation. Is there any value to, if you look in one entrance? You abandon the existing entrance and use the one opposite of Rose Hill Road and build a section around that and just won't be lungated buildings closer to, closer to the highway?
Yeah, George, so a center, a center major driveway, right?
Oh, you might have.
Opposite.
The thing is that you, having it in the side would get me difficult because you offset very close to the.
Is it that far off?
Well, that's, that's what, that was the point I was making before.
Rose Hill Road opposite to make an empty main entrance in the side.
And closing the western.
Closing the left one, yeah. I think, I think you did look at one in the center and that was.
Well, that was part of it, it just didn't line up with Rose Hill, so it was a matter of then putting it on Rose Hill and making that a, uh.
Uh, Rose Hill.
It's in the exit.
Are they forcing all the trucks to come in and out the same curb cut? Uh, we'll, we'll study all the options. I think, I think it could be more safer with two curb cuts, but we'll study the one curb cut. We'll study different building orientation.
Yeah.
We'll study different setbacks.
Okay.
There'll be sketch studies.
Yeah. Thank you.
We have, we have a lot of that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you. Great, thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome, no problem. I hope you.
Is there any property between the street and the, or they write on Willow Road?
I think there must be some property there.
We said that are taken care of.
Yeah, it has to be in the property now.
Oh, there's an application there.
Was that the other thing?
Across the street, there's a historic house that's from the United Kingdom.
Okay, Anthony, Whispering Oaks, lot thirteen.
Yeah. This is nice and easy. Um, you might recall a couple of years ago, um, the village of Sagaponic, um, we had the Whispering Oaks subposition, um, which had a covenants and restrictions for clearing.
Clearing.
And they wanted to come in because it's in the village of Sagaponic, if you recall.
And, and do a blanket thing.
And, and which they couldn't do, all they have to do is individually. So at that time, you actually, at Wayne's recommendation, the covenants just require a simple majority plus one or with no public hearing. Wayne suggested having a hearing at that time, notify all the neighbors.
All of them.
Some came and said, we all want to do this. Um, not too many have come back, but we do have one for this property.
Okay, so they were in agreement.
It's all fifty-eight Town Line Road, it's lot thirteen of Whispering Oaks. Uh, and I'm recommending, it says, in the document, please work here by the end, the theory restrictions from twenty-five percent to thirty-five percent for lot thirteen of the subdivision map of Whispering Oaks. Uh, subject to review and approval of legal documents by the town attorney's office.
Hey, that's very straightforward, you said it all. Wayne did it to say work.
What? He said, he's still going to build a dump.
Lots of your voice.
How big are these properties?
Thank you.
So you, so you can, so you can bill your clients.
Right, okay. So motion by Gloria and second by George, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed abstention, six in favor, one absent. Um, Seth, you are.
I have a road abandonment application for you to consider. Here's a draft resolution.
Pine Nick.
Forty-five Ocean in East Quogue, uh, part of the nineteen twenty-eights, uh, I'm sorry, nineteen eleven.
Nineteen eleven.
Subdivision. I'm sorry. So yes, it's in East Quogue, it's in the R twenty old file map as well. Uh, the owner, Mr. Nadalini, would like you to consider the abandonment of Pine Neck. Uh, it is to the north of his, uh, parcel. Uh, this has also been abandoned at an adjacent, uh, thirty-four Ocean, has a twenty-foot abandonment on this same paper road. So.
So it'll mean that the whole road then will be abandoned. His half and the other half.
Oh, no, that is an adjacent, uh, I should say across catty corner.
Oh. Oh.
On the paper road.
So he's abandoning half.
So he, this will be a twenty-foot abandonment of a, uh, uh, for, for this lot, uh, which is how many square feet?
Okay. Any questions on that? George, motion?
I want to know how close it is to the ocean since it's Ocean Avenue.
In name only, I'm afraid.
They find distance, have a motion.
Motion by George, second by Gloria and all in favor. Opposed abstention, six in favor, one absent.
He's often optimistic, right?
Claire, go away.
I'll go last.
You just want to take your box downstairs, I'll text you.
Seth, why don't you do forty-five Foster's if you're there?
Okay. Don't have paper.
Oh, that's, uh.
That's pren-.
Oh, that's pren-er, sorry, no, 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 no. It's not.
I, I told him I'll text you as well.
Okay, um, but Anthony, why don't you go ahead then with Eastport Bible Church?
Yeah, right. I've attached the report and the resolution.
Number ten.
There's more there that really needs to be. Good project.
Anyone here for this?
Uh, I don't know, probably not.
Got a whole stack.
You are? Come on up.
Oh, there you go, I'm sorry, I didn't say, sorry about that.
Good hall, do you have the report?
I haven't seen the, I saw that, I, I saw the traffic report from last month.
Yeah, yeah.
I haven't seen the, uh.
You have an extra copy?
Do we have an extra?
There's, uh, the report and the resolution.
Oh, okay, right.
Go ahead, Anthony.
And the board remembers this project. They, uh, have the church here right on the highway, Eastport Bible Church, and then they own the lots back here. Uh, the plan is to demolish the existing structure and then put up a community building, six thousand square feet. This church, which is very hard to build. I can't use here for the board to say. Big city, community building over here, setback, parking in the back, the existing improvements on the road. So just go through the report real quick here. Uh, the first page, we did see for, this was a type one action because it was over fifty parking spaces, but the board issued a neg debt in August of twenty twenty-four. Um, we had a public hearing on October tenth and it was closed at the ten-day break comment period. Uh, we didn't receive any comments. Uh, we did referrals, town engineer, uh, did a referral and recommend approval, actually. Um, no other changes required by the engineer. They did a really nice job with the plans here, I think they, they really did. So he just has the fee that they have to pay, play, uh, pay and recommending approval. Uh, fire prevention, I just grade out their, you know, particular recommendation. Drainage should be relocated out of the roadways for capable supporting heavy saparex of the Eastport Fire Department. Uh, everything else at the standard requirements and, uh, like all projects at the time, the building permanently goes back to the fire marshal for further review. Uh, highway department stated there are no comments or concerns. Uh, the Suffolk County D P W, uh, came back with some recommendations, again, like, as we know, uh, their standard ADA compliance and any changes, uh, needed along the roadway. So they, uh, made some recommendations and I've incorporated those requirements into the site plan approval. Um, Eastport Fire District had no further recommendations. Um, the Historic District Board, um, and they gave us a letter October sixteenth, uh, twenty twenty-four. They go through, uh, some comments of history. When they went to the Historics Board at the time, the proposed roof was a standing seam metal roof. Um, I actually really liked the roof, I thought it looked really nice, but working with the Landmarks Board, they wanted it, uh, to be a gray asphalt shingle to be, uh, consistent with what's on the church building. Uh, and that's what they agreed, so we're going to incorporate that into our approval as well. We'll work that out with them. Uh, other than that, they, they had no further comments. Um, then I go through the site plan standards, uh, traffic access, um, the new curb cuts to provide access to the buildings. It's over a hundred and seventy-five feet from the intersection, so that's good. Um, I do mention in my staff comments about some potential pedestrian, um, you know, pathway or something from the church, uh, you know, from the church parking lot to the, uh, to the community building. Doesn't look like there's a lot of room for it and, you know, it looks like the parking for the church and the parking for the community building are sort of separate entities. So I just happened to mention that in there if there was something, but it looks like they do have some, uh, stripe markings, um, which looks like that, that would, that would be okay, so. Um, again, interior circulation and parking, it was the same comment, um, everything looks good there. Uh, landscaping, um, and screening, they did a really nice job with the landscaping and it includes, by the way, um, some new street trees and landscaping along, uh, here. We're going to maintain the existing street trees and put in some new ones. Uh, they did, um, actually, uh, some new landscaping in the front here, um, along the existing, um, which is good. Yeah, so all this is getting, uh, reworked a little bit, they have a much nicer planning plan in here. And I won't make any recommendations, you know, in front of the church building, it looks nicely there, unobstructed. Um, so that was good. Um, master plan, um, this has been a long-established church in the community, so I think we're okay there. Uh, there's really no natural features or cultural features other than the historic church, which is being maintained. Um, G talks about pavement, and again, I just happened to mention the pedestrian access and they do show something, strike. Uh, lighting, um, so the recommendation that reduce the Kelvin, uh, to twenty-seven hundred and then reduce the light fixtures to ten feet, that's, that's what we asked for. Um, and then I grade out some of the conditions that we would put in, um, the approval, which are the standard lighting approvals. Um, I talked about the facades and, um, the A R B approved this in October. Uh, and as I said with the Landmarks Board, they required the roof change, which the applicant agreed. Uh, drainage, that town engineer has signed off on the project. Public utilities, health department approval for the water supply and seeping is required. Uh, public address or sound system, uh, nothing is proposed. Physically cha- physically challenged access to ADA compliant parking spaces have been provided. The drop curving and it's in front of the building. Our energy conservation, so as you know, we have our standard blurb, um, that we like to put in about incorporating certain design elements. And I did speak, um, gentleman here about that. The church is in sort of a bit of a position, they, you know, really can't do solar at this point and everything. Um, and as for doing onsite charging stations, um, I think what the church is explaining to me is that there are people that are coming there standing for very long periods of time, they didn't know that, that that would be necessary, so. Um, we could, we could talk about that when we do the, uh, resolution. Um, architecture, again, everything was approved, um, by the A R B and Landmarks made that one change. Um, and then agricultural district, there's nothing there, not in the agricultural overlay. Uh, and then we have the general special exception standards. Um, so I think, you know, rather than go through A through M, I, I think would say the community building associated with the church meets all the standards. Again, they kept the access driveway off the, um, off the intersection, they've incorporated some nice landscaping. Do some upgrades to the site, so I think it'll be, be good. Then if you go to page, uh, ten, um, there's actually, uh, some special. Then if you go to page ten, um, there's actually some special standards, uh, specific to churches. And, uh, you need two hundred feet and not less than two acres. Uh, this lot combined, they're over two acres. Uh, the frontage along the Montalk Highway is actually, uh, less than two hundred feet, but that's an existing condition. And then the frontage along Tuttle is two seventy-five. All buildings and structures shall be fifty feet from any property line, it meets that standard, uh, and lot coverage is well under twenty percent. And then if you go to the resolution, page two of the resolution, you'll see the resolve, um, approved the staff report that we just went through. Uh, and then the grade-out resolve, I just have to list all the, uh, the plans. When you have fifteen plans, I like to, you know, outline them, so I just have to add them to the resolution. Uh, but changes to the plan prior to signature, uh, the changes per the Suffolk County DPW, uh, as well as the Town Office of Fire Prevention, there were no engineer changes at this time. Uh, changes to elevations and floor, floor plans, um, per the Landmarks Board, the elevations will change the, the roof material. Uh, changes to the lighting plan, as we discussed, um, twenty-seven hundred Kelvin maximum. Be sure that the photometric data shows all the foot handle at zero. I believe it does actually, but I'll double check that. Uh, and lighted fixtures to be reduced to ten feet. Uh, general conditions of the approval, uh, all HVAC-based systems shall be screened for not visible from the road. Uh, no dusk-to-dawn lighting fixtures, all lighting shall be shielded downward, and no public address or sound systems. Uh, any signage shall be reviewed and approved by the planning board. Uh, and then the pre-construction meeting with the engineering division prior construction starting. Uh, and then conditions prior to map signature, uh, submission of the engineering review fee, the affidavit that we require indicating compliance with the site plan conditions, uh, and then submission of the six sets of plans for signature. Uh, and then prior to issuing sub-ase certificate of not feet, uh, making time for a period of two years for the landscaping.
I think that the asphalt roof is, is a positive because that could, um, allow solar in the future, where I don't think the metal roof would have.
Yeah, I'm not sure specifically on that, but you may be right on that.
I think I'm, I'm not a hundred percent.
You may be right about that, Laura, now that you say it, because I feel like someone said that to me recently. So, you know, we would ask, you know, the church to look into it.
Can we add your name for the record?
Sure. Uh, my name is Craig Tillinghast.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Craig, I picked last time you were in, there was, one of the discussions was whether we're going to have a little kitchen in there or anything like that, any shower, kitchen facilities?
Uh, there, there will be a small kitchen in the, uh, in the building, uh, you know, basically for periodic church.
Little functions.
Yeah, church events or, you know, breakfast, or whatever.
No, that makes sense.
Kind of goes with, you know, the general church use.
But it won't be a commercial kitchen?
No.
But that will, that will have to still be reviewed by the, by the Health Department?
Health Department?
Yes, we do have conditional Health Department approval. We're just, you know, uh, final paperwork to be submitted.
Any, any other questions? George, you're moving it. Motion, motion by George, second by Kate, all in favor.
Aye.
Oppose abstention, six in favor, one absent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Prenta, forty-five Foster Avenue? We have, we have a lot to get through, folks.
I have a couple things that are probably pretty quick.
This one is actually incomplete. Incomplete?
Yeah.
What's missing?
What's missing? I'm sorry?
What's missing?
Oh, the elevation, the building elevation, they're proposing to demolish of existing structures. This is, um, a parcel that's in the LI forty, right just north of the railroad station in Bridgehampton. Yeah, that lot there with the cars. And they submitted an application to demo all of that and develop the site and put in a seventy-five hundred square foot metal building. There's no building elevations yet. And they're actually, the owners let me know that they're still finalizing and they're making some changes anyway. So it's incomplete for now, we can't.
Motion to deem it incomplete by Gloria, second by Kate, all in favor. Oppose abstention, six in favor, one absent. Clu... Claire? Yep, Loves and Fishes.
Someone did I lose him?
We lost him. He was here just two seconds ago.
Yeah. Loves and Fishes, so, um, they're getting close to signature on the plans. And they had two requests. One was to, um...
There you are.
You're right, yeah. Good to see you.
One was to phase projects. The phase one would be the commercial buildings in the front, and phase two would be the residence.
Right.
So I don't think there's any problems with that.
I don't think there's a problem with that.
So I can write that up.
Yeah.
The other one is that there was five trees along Butter Lane, and you got out information from the experts.
Yes.
That said, um, that the trees were in bad condition with three.
And they'd like to remove those trees.
The ones along Butter? Because there, there's a clump of them in the corner.
Along Butter, there's five along Butter, trees, zolcovas, and two maples. And here's martyrs, got a couple copies.
I'm talking about.
I do have a couple copies.
Can you point out where they are?
Yep, so they're along the west, the west side, along Butter Lane, and here, actually, that's the letter. And I printed out a copy of the plan. Actually, they show them on the site plan. The site plan shows them. We have five trees along the site plan. This is the landscape plan, but you can see the trees in right of way.
Aren't they already gone?
Are they already gone?
Everything's been clear cut, so, but there are some, like.
The ones in the right of way.
The ones right in the corner, right here, where I just drew that, this. You're not talking about those?
No, I'm talking about the five along the west side.
I think they're gone.
They might be, yeah.
There's construction fencing up. I'll check to see.
Yeah, I mean, they were not, they were pretty scraggly, but then, but we, we've indicated them to be replaced, correct?
We, now, his request is that they would be replaced at the end of the project, like all the other plantings. I think because.
But before, when this is complete, they should go in.
Yeah, in phase one.
Phase one.
Yeah, so in phase one.
Does anybody have a problem with phasing?
We had proposed, the, the last approved plan put, uh, plantings in the right of way, we're moving them off the right of way. Did you want to address that?
No, because I wasn't going to make you do it anyways.
Okay.
That's what I do.
Okay, so, so we're in agreement with the phasing?
Yes.
We'll clear that one.
Phase one and phase two. Any timing on that? I mean, if, after phase one is totally complete, then they'll go into phase two?
Not go into phase two, but we have to do the, the joint, or the improvements required, so all the parking will have to be installed regardless.
It's basically.
It's just the house.
Just the building itself.
The building and maybe that part per share of, you know, that driveway.
Yeah, that structure.
Yeah.
But all the common elements will be put in with phase one.
Okay.
Which is as soon as possible. They're submitting for the building apartments.
Now.
Well, essentially, once we get the final sign off on the site plan.
It's a very bare corner now, very bare.
So with that, then we could have the site plan signed, and then we would apply for the building.
Okay.
Could be nice to me.
Sorry?
Be nice to me. Because I have to sign it.
You have to, oh, you have to. You could recuse if you have to.
Just the trees going back, same species, zolcova and the two maples?
Two maple?
Two maples and three zolcova.
Four years ago, the town replaced like fourteen trees along Main Street. Because we had to take it down, they were, you know, in bad condition. I don't know if you'd want to try to match those.
Yeah, because they, they were actually, the, the Bridgehampton people made a big deal about the kind of trees they want.
Okay.
So check those out.
Who would have that information?
What, can somebody just go look?
Tom Hage would have it in his file somewhere, because we did all the work on it. Tom Houghton.
Tom Houghton.
Would.
Okay, so what?
Yeah, it was our Bridgehampton Traffic Safety Plan.
It's going to have to be street trees. I want to recommend four inches diameter. And then, um, we'll try, attempt to meet, um, to match that, if not, we'll, we'll pick up street trees.
They were plane trees or, yeah, I think.
They were London plane trees?
Would that be in the overlay, the historic overlay, or is that just architecture or recommendations?
I don't think that's just architecture.
But maybe the historian would have some information about it.
Okay, we'll get back to.
Did you hear about the tree caliber?
Four inch.
Four inch, yeah.
Yeah. Kind of tree.
The kind of.
Yeah, that's what we're looking at. So we'll get back to him on that, but.
We could ask, um, who's the chair of the?
Civic, there's no, there's no.
No, of the, uh, of Landmarks Board, you don't know.
Are there wet power lines? Are there wet power lines in Butter? Are there wet power lines in Butter?
I believe there are.
Yes.
The plant they really should, probably have to meet whatever requirements they have to stay.
But that, that was part of the idea, the tree that they put in on.
Exactly.
They spent a lot of time.
If they, if they, if they're treated, it doesn't exceed, doesn't grow too high, because then what's life status for an industry?
What's asplunk does it? I mean, they chop it, butcher it.
They just hack them.
Probably what happens in this case.
Destroy them, yeah.
Yeah, you know, they really need to.
Okay, so listen.
The civics came up with short trees and tall trees, depending upon where the paralys were.
We worked very closely with the CAC on that, so.
All right, so there's a record on it.
There's a file, so I'll go ask for a copy.
Whatever, whatever the tree is, the tree is.
Can I call for a vote?
Yeah.
Motion, Gloria, second by Kate, all in favor.
I would just want to tell yourself, sir.
Call Ben and Cosson.
Yeah. We're shivering to your house.
Six in, six in favor, one absent. Thank you.
Is it Loves and Fishes? That's why they're calling that, so they, our owner?
Moving on.
Starbucks? Bridgehampton?
See, I have B and B property, Starbucks, yeah, so here. Didn't we do that?
Because we did, uh.
Oh, that's a sign, yeah.
Now, is this Starbucks, you have a library? Yes. So basically, they're just refreshing their signs.
I know, I was.
Yeah.
Because they're closed, right? No, they're closed. Oh.
Yeah, they're redoing the inside too, but you can see it's faded, right?
Yeah.
I wanted to get, get you the color chip, and it's the, it's the, uh, it's the Starbucks color chip, so it's going to now look like this, brighter white.
So replacing in time and place.
Right, in time and place.
Okay.
This one is like a decal on the window, now it's going to be an insignia inside, not illuminated. I left it as a condition. Um, the only thing is that they have a beautiful beacon point is also on the side, so I'm having them take that down.
That's the upstairs tenant, yeah.
You're not allowed to have two signs on property, so.
Good.
It's coming down. So those are my two conditions. ARB has approved them.
Okay.
So if this, guys are good to go?
Yeah. Motion. Motion by Gloria, second by George, all in favor. Oppose abstention, six in favor, one absent. Anthony Howard, Irrevocable Living Trust. Is Seth working on the, the referral?
Yes, yes. Doing, I was downstairs.
Number eleven, Howard, Irrevocable Living Trust.
Yeah, the board, uh, will remember this, um, we've been looking at this for a long time now. It's actually legalized.
No.
A second-floor apartment above the garage on this property, this is a commercial property on the way up road, eligible to the zone. And it really, uh, there's not much going on other than to legalize it. It's got a couple of retail, commercial uses in the first, um, in the front building. Um, and then in the first floor, on the back of that building, there's an, uh, an existing.
This is where those little shops are.
Yeah.
In downtown, no, yeah.
In downtown, that's right, yeah, downtown. There's an apartment, an existing apartment that's CEO'd on the first floor of the commercial buildings, and now we're looking to legalize the second apartment. And what they're doing, um, as part of the plan, uh, they are upgrading the septic system, they're before the Health Department now. They're formalizing some of the parking, putting in some new drainage. This was a, a pretty good plan. Um, we don't love illegal, uh, uses, but, um, in this particular case, part of what's happening is it's got to become affordable, so it's going to be covenanted that the unit will be an affordable unit in town, so.
You have owner's endorsement here?
Yes.
And it has to meet all current building codes and everything?
Yes.
And is it in perpetu, in perpetu, well, I can't say that.
In perpetuity. Um, what I'm passing you out is the special exception standards, and then the resolution, what happened was, whatever happened to my staff report prior to the meeting, printed up, disappeared. So, but this isn't a particularly complicated project, so, um, rather than struggling to try to fix something, I just, I printed out the special exception standards, so I can just quickly go through them with you guys on this project. But, you know, as I said, with the septic system upgrade, formalization of the parking, uh, getting an affordable unit here.
It's a good thing.
It's all a good thing. I think that's, you know, by any measure, um, you know, the, the, the standards have been met. But on the special exception standards, if you go to page three, nope. Page five. You know, these are the key here, standards as it relates to the apartments in certain business districts. So, um, you know, to point out, uh, this meets the standards, and to your point, um, uh, Tom is, uh, you know, part of, you know, what he was doing is getting the, the second floor ready, um, to make it year-round and, you know, not seasonal and everything else, because they have to have, you know, the equal standards building code, so. So that's what he was doing. But yeah, it's, uh, it meets the standards, it's on the second floor. Now, you know, it is a garage building with storage and some office space for the, um, businesses. But it is on the second floor, which is the requirement. Um, it's not really above a, a retail store or, you know, an office use, but it does have offices and storage associated with the retail businesses there, so I think that that standard is met. Um, and then some of these standards, you know, there's going to be a covenant that it's going to be, um, preserved for moderate income families, and that'll be one of the conditions that you'll see.
Will that be managed by the town? How's it going?
Yep, a hundred percent. So yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, by and large, this is a pretty straightforward project. Part of the problem, why this took so long, the board knows, and then, you know, that, who knows this, is that it's for affordable housing, uh, but the town doesn't have any sanitary flow credits, uh, in this area, uh, to provide. Which means this guy's sort of stuck now going to the private market to, to get this. The Health Department, that's where it's been reaching on the Health Department. The Health Department is requiring that this unit also be affordable, by the way, that was the condition of them being able to bring the development, right? So they're waiting now on this board's resolution, saying that this is going to be affordable before they allow the transfer of the development rights, so.
Okay.
But it's, it's good that they're doing it.
It's complicated, but it's, it's getting another apartment.
We need the rentals.
Yeah.
However, we get them.
Yeah.
Uh, so if you go to the second page of the, uh, resolution, um, you'll see that I grade that out again, because I have to list the plans that were submitted. I just want to, I, we, we get so many provisions during the course of an application, I just want to make sure I have the right ones that I'm writing. Uh, changes to the site plan, um, compliance with the requirements of the engineer, so he's just asking for, um, he asked for additional, um, soil disturbance area, um, erosion control, and I, you know, so that's been incorporated. Uh, provide the dumpster location along with enclosure detail and landscaping. Uh, and then, again, the planning board is encouraging the applicant, uh, to incorporate sustainable green design, including the charging stations. And then the general conditions of approval, uh, no overnight storage of cars, trucks, boats. Signage is to be approved by the planning board, uh, the screening of all HVAC and mechanical equipment, uh, the installation or use of dusk-to-dawn fixtures is prohibited. Uh, no additional lighting without planning board approval, and all lighting shall be shielded downward. They need any approvals from the town highway department, um, for changes in the curb cut. Arrange for the pre-construction meeting with the town engineering division. Uh, and then to be completed prior to signature, uh, submission, approval, filing, and recording of an affordability covenant that will restrict the apartment to income eligible housebirds in accordance with the town's affordable housing program through the town's direct of community development. Um, so that's to that point. And let's add the words in, in perpetuity.
Yes.
That's, that's.
That's a big deal.
That's a big deal. Along with the title certification, if applicable, I'm sorry, title certification, yes, mortgage incentive applicable. The affidavit indicating compliance with the conditions, and then submission of the six sets of plans.
Any questions?
That, any questions?
Yeah. Okay, a motion to approve by Kate, second by Gloria, all in favor.
Aye.
Oppose abstention, six in favor, one absent. Thank you. Anthony, nine eleven. Thank you, Anthony, nine eleven.
So that's the seven eleven project in plan, that's at the traffic circle they've asked for, uh, an adjournment or a, an extension of making the secret determination until March twenty seventh. But just so I can say to the board, I'm, I'm going to send them a message after this, uh, that we've got to come to some type of, uh, conclusion on this.
Yes, exactly.
So let's, let's do it for the twenty seventh and see what.
Okay.
Have they, have they ready to send something else, or are they just stalling so that they'll change their mind?
No, I just, I, you know, it, it, I just think that they're looking at other avenues and what the options are.
Okay. Motion. Motion by Gloria, and second by George, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, six in favor, one absent, extension to March twenty seventh. Thirteen is ninety-four, Dune Road Holding Corp.
So this, we had a very nice discussion at the last meeting. This is for the dockers site. So the memo, uh, we went through last time in detail with John. Um, and as promised, I edited it, uh, based on discussion that we had in the applicant with the board, and I put things, crossed things out and edited and read. Um, so while we'll just quickly go through it, because at the end of this, just so the board knows, we're going to deem this inadequate for public review. They'll have to revise the DEIS, and when we deem inadequate, then it goes out for public review, and it gets referred to all involved agencies. So the other side of it is, we're going to get a lot more comments on this document at some point, so. So on page two, um, the potential impacts, uh, I noted about the soil boring data, that we needed some additional soil, and the applicant has indicated that they will provide that additional information. So that's good. Uh, the next one was about the brown water data. I referenced that they made reference to the twenty sixteen, uh, test hole data, but they in fact do have updated information in there for twenty twenty-two, so that, that was okay. Uh, the wetlands delineation, um. So if you recall, there was a wetlands line that was done, I believe, in twenty eighteen or something. It was verified by Marty's office. The wetlands line was updated in twenty twenty-two with no real significant changes. That wasn't, you know, verified by Marty, but it's consistent with the original line. So what we agreed to, um, is that, um, we could get it verified, um, and we could do it for the final DEIS, because Marty's going to get this and will tell me if it's wrong or not, so that was okay. On page three there, uh, and onto page four, um, I had indicated they, some of the coastal policies, um, I didn't think I agreed with the comments, uh, and then they indicated that there would be some social and economic impacts, that the property became flooded, but they didn't elaborate on what those impacts would be. But as you can see in the red, the applicant has indicated they will expand the analysis as it pertains to the policies, and will address the social and economic impact, so they said they would do that, so that's, that's going to be revised. Um, the potential impacts on zoning, uh, if you recall, I had mentioned about, um, you know, a comparison and analysis of what's being proposed versus what can be accomplished under current zoning. Um, and I think John Bennett effectively was saying, well, you know, you're talking about two, two lots in an R A D zoning district. A more appropriate analysis would be, and I say here, the applicant has indicated they will provide a more detailed analysis of the impacts of the proposed non-conforming development versus the existing non-conforming development. Um, because that's, that's where all the existing environmental conditions, uh, come into play.
And what's our, what's our position on the existing non-conforming? Is there anything that the town or this board, uh, can do about something that has existed and is non-conforming?
During a review process, yes, there's limitations on how much it can be expanded, and that's subject to zoning board review. If they're going to do any expansions or any changes to the site, it would still be subject to planning board review. But you can't, you're not going to tell them they can't have their restaurant there.
But, and they can continue in a non-conforming way, as long as they don't change anything.
Yeah.
And there's nothing the town can do.
No, unless the town decides to amortize, as they're talking about sand lines.
I got it.
Yeah, so this also, I, I just want to make sure we capture this. There is no analysis of what the underlying zoning would accommodate. They just analyzed the nitrogen output of the project, which is not really how our standard practice. So the twenty-five units that were proposed were, you know, they just said, oh, we're, we're better off, because it's less nitrogen output, but the intent of that legislation to update the septic systems was not to increase density, it was to.
Reduce nitrogen.
Reduce nitrogen and, and maintain the underlying density. So I think that we need to capture that in here, um, because while the argument was creative, it was.
Confided the.
Yeah.
Reasonable argument.
Yeah.
Yes, I do recall that discussion, so I, I will add that, um, that the analysis should not be limited to just what the nitrogen loading impacts would be, but should capture the density increases as it relates to.
Right, so if they want to go to non-conforming and put condos there, it's not, the, the bar of measurement isn't the nitrogen output, it's the density that's allowable for the site.
Yeah, but it is everything, you know, we're looking at all the impacts, so yes, it's not limited to the one, so I, I would definitely.
Yeah, it's nitrogen. It's two thousand, it's first twenty-five.
I will definitely add that.
Right.
So Anthony, you've crossed out a lot.
And then we can consider all the other things.
Well, that's, because that was all, that was just based on the, um, um, the first one was about, you know, the underlying zoning, and some of the add, what she was talking about, the increase in density. Um, the second one was about the eleven thousand square foot density standard that they use. Um, I only mentioned it because they said that that's the standard that they used. I didn't really understand what the zoning basis for it, but I, it doesn't really make a difference, there is no zoning basis for it. They just came up with, uh, based on, based on what they would allow in an NF, um, a multifamily situation. So that, that's the reason why we did that.
Okay.
Um, scenic resources.
Next page, page five.
Uh, if you go to five, the applicant has indicated they will revise the DEIS, um, to address our, our visual impacts. Both, um, they got to indicate that the impacts are real, insignificant. And B, they got to put it in the context of the north side of Dune Road. I no doubt, the Dune, the round Dune is on the other side, uh, but we're talking about the north side of Dune Road, so.
I just drove down there the other day, I mean.
It's a vista.
It's significant.
It's, it's a vista out there, for sure. Um, affordable housing, again, the applicant has indicated, um, that to comply with the standard, they would pay a fee in lieu of, um, but I mentioned that the standard for complying with the affordable housing is at the discretion of the planning board. So the DEIS should outline what all the, uh, options are. The applicant's preference notwithstanding, we understand, but they should outline what all the.
Could we ask them to build it somewhere else?
Yeah, and, and that's one of the options they should identify, yeah. The Southampton four hundred sustainability element, I had indicated to the applicant, you know, that they show compliance with the number of standards from the four hundred plus sustainability element of the town's comp plan, uh, but they didn't, um, address the climate action plan. They had indicated they were in the middle of doing the DEIS, um, and the applicant had indicated they will address the climate action plan in the final, uh, DEIS. I, I don't have a problem with that.
Is there anything in the master plan that calls for the preservation of that strip, the revision?
Nothing specifically.
I mean, it is barrier island, so there must be something in the climate mitigation plan about defending against sea level rise, et cetera, so.
Hundred percent, retreats, you know, and, and, and. Yeah, and all, and, and those issues were addressed in the DEIS, you know, because we said, in the scoping document, you have to look at certain alternatives, which they didn't do, and you got to look at, so, a hundred percent.
Is CPF conversation something we could note, or has been noted in the DEIS?
Are they acquiring the site?
Yeah.
Yeah, they've acquired other properties along Dune Road there.
Let me look, um, I, I, I don't remember, it's a big document, if, if that specifically. I could tell you, I do recall them indicating in the DEIS what they believe the value of the property was. Um, so I believe there was some discussion about preservation.
Which is probably not a number that CPF would be comfortable with.
Right.
There's eighteen and a half, really.
Right, that's what I heard.
First of all, it's easy.
It is, absolutely.
Yeah, no, that's true. Uh, the next one on the bottom, page five, and the top of page six, was about the slot zone. So the issue for me in the DEIS was, um, it, it, it's hard to follow in a way, because they, they, they indicate different scenarios under different, well, they, different impacts under different scenarios, so, um, you know, they have scenarios when if, if there's an eighteen inch, uh, increase in, um, sea level rise versus twenty-four, um, versus no change in sea level, but versus a category three storm. So I, I've asked them to clarify, so it's easier to understand what the impacts are. Uh, the transportation, you know, we had a discussion about this, again, about the evacuation routes, which is a discussion. Doesn't seem to be a lot of information as it pertains to traffic flow and bridge capacity and everything else. They gave a detailed traffic analysis, so we know about what traffic impacts would be, what the numbers look like. Um, at this stage of the game, you know, if, if they're saying there's not a lot of information, how we could figure out if there's going to be a bottleneck on a bridge or something, I, you know, I, I, I could, I could capitulate to that.
Or when that road is completely flooded and impassable.
Effectively speaking, if you didn't get out before the storm, then God help you.
That's right.
Okay.
Um, bottom, page six, uh, again, visual and aesthetic resources, if you go, uh, the applicant is, is making those changes, just so you know.
Okay.
Evacuation groups in the STP, um, we eliminated that with the STPs. They gave a whole detailed design analysis. I guess what I had mentioned, um, was what happens if the whole property gets inundated with, uh, with water.
Flooded.
But the reality is, is if the property gets inundated with water, the entire sewage treatment plant will be underwater then. Uh, so, I mean, I think it's safe, it's suffice to say that we know then that we potentially reach into, you know, whatever body of water. So, uh, they did give the design, uh, you know, with the amount of fill and the elevations of different, different equipment, so I, I think we're okay with that. And then the other changes was, um, I had mentioned, um, the alternative, do not realistically evaluate the potential use or removal of the dock facility, but the applicant has indicated that the dock facilities have been revamped with trustee approvals and conservation board approvals, and then being maintained as part of this project, so I guess.
Can we get a date on those from them, when they were?
Oh, yeah, no, the DEIS has all the permits in, in the DEIS, yeah. Uh, and then the reduction in density, um, they came up with a, an alternative with twenty. I said, what about something else? And they pointed out that our scope didn't tell them how many to, so they just went with twenty. I think we could accept that as the reduced density plan, and we'll evaluate it based on that. So they've got some changes to do. I'm going to fix, you know, and add what you said, Kate, because we did have the discussion, I remember that now. And I'm recommending that we deem it, did the DEIS for ninety-four, Dune Road Holding Corp inadequate for public review.
Okay.
And then what happens next?
Motion by, can I take a vote? Motion by Kate, second by Gloria, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, six in favor, one absent. Is there anything off this agenda?
Maybe I didn't.
Anything that can be moved to next week?
I mean, I've only got a few more, one of them's Ashley Caprero.
Okay, Anthony, Ashley Caprero.
This was Willow, uh, corner of Willow and, uh.
No.
All right, good afternoon, Martha Ryker for the applicant, I'm joined by Kelly Calabacca from New York.
Hang on for a second.
I thought you didn't even want to start.
No, I just looked at you.
So we previously deemed this application incomplete, I was waiting for the engineer, um, review. But just, so, on the engineer review, it was weird, I got the checklist from Tom, because our engineer does his own checklist for completeness. The checklist has everything checked off, that largely, all the information was submitted. Uh, but then there's a little note at the bottom that says that they're recommending that they deem the application incomplete in order to verify if the drywells are entering into, I mean, if the leaders and gutters in the building are entering into drywells. Um, I'm not going to recommend that we deem the application incomplete on that, because if they're not, they will when the site plan is done.
Right.
So, but in any case, um, we had, we had to deal with the traffic review, um, and I've read the, the traffic study, and I think Tom had a few comments, um, and then we were just going to go through the secret, because the first part of this is to do secret and deem it, um, complete, now that I have Tom's, um, comments, but I know that, uh, Tom Neely had a couple of, I think, questions or something regarding the traffic study, so I'd like to hear what Tom has to say.
Uh, okay. Well, I was, let me say, I was pleasantly surprised to see the, um, lack of right angle crashes on that whole series of roads along that corridor.
Yeah, the data was terrible.
Yeah, it was, it was a good, um, good to see. Uh, and I think that, that we had spoken at one point about the possibility, and it would have to be a conversation, you know, with your traffic engineer about whether the town, uh, the planning board should consider, um, recommending to the town board some kind of left turn restrictions on Willow or one-way. We talked about the possibility of one-way on Willow, so that people weren't going up there and making a left. Um, I think, you know, we can maybe hold off on, certainly hold off on that for today, but that's something to be.
Just to have an application for a medical office building on the other side of the street.
Right, and in fact, this, uh, report incorporates the numbers for the medical off, what, using I T E records. It, it incorporates the traffic volume.
Well, and then, right.
We haven't seen that yet.
You have the application that we just saw for the water mill building supply, right?
Yeah.
Right. Which is a little farther down, so, um, you know, I, I won't get too far into it, I think we're going to probably be following up, but, you know, those numbers, like I said, were, were pleasantly, uh, low as far as crashes. The, uh, where, where was I?
That, that's a rest, was a restaurants?
No, it was an antique store.
Okay, so.
So it's retail to retail.
Right.
But the antique store is not, is, I would think, probably the low, low use.
Right, and I think we, you will have to, and this does, you know, take into account that there's going to be, um, relatively high, uh, increase in the number of people using Willow, obviously, between the medical building and.
Right.
And, uh, this application. But actually, the analysis looked at Deerfield, looked at Willow, looked at, you know, um, what else was along the corridor there? Noa Dona, looked at a whole series of them. So my comment was, with regard to all of those cumulatively, we're not.
Because you really couldn't get to the life in that little shopping center.
I don't think there's an actual complete through, I mean.
From Noa Dona you can.
Okay. I'll trust you.
I, I, I've done it.
Uh, there's a dirt, I think there's a dirt access.
You, you, you can go actually through the.
No, Noa Dona, yes, I'm sorry, but over to Deerfield, there's no, there's no access over to.
Hmm, yeah, you're right.
This, but anyway.
There's a dirt road, but.
Um, so I will kind of leave a couple of my, I did have a, a couple of comments, but I don't think they're that critical right now for us to, to worry about, so I don't know where we're going with this.
No, I mean, the other side of this, if we go through the site plan process, we do our referrals.
Right.
Um, we could deal with no left turns up the property and that kind of stuff, you know. The question at this stage of the game is, you know, impacts on the environment, you know, whether it be significant impacts. You know, one of the things the board asked to look at, and we did look at it a little bit, was, you know, can, is there a possibility to lining up the driveways, you know, on Willow here?
Right.
Uh, makes it, you know, it's not as easy as, I did meet with, you know, the applicant. You know, which we, we want to keep, you know, this as far away from the intersection as possible. So it seems to me with the building located right where it is, you know, we don't have a ton of options, you know, beyond this point, you know what I mean, to, to move it up here. If anything, I think it would have to be this site plan that's going to have to sort of push it to the back, um, in order to attempt to line it up. Um, but I don't see it on this site plan moving this.
Do we have the site plan up there?
Yeah. You know, you know, at this stage where we're trying to keep the parking back here, um, and not get too close to the building, um, you know. That's something, though, that we could still look at, you know, as we go through the two site plan process. I don't think at the end of the day, it will make, you know, a huge impact in terms of traffic impacts. I mean, the traffic numbers are what they are, I think a better design is always to line things up when you can. The other side of it is, you know, if we were talking about Montauk Highway, you know, it'd be a much different scenario, you know, than Willow, let's say, where.
Can we talk about the parking?
Yeah.
I mean, the parking is all on the west side of the property. They're taking down that little shed.
They're taking down the shed here.
And you're putting all the parking on the side, there's no. And you're putting all the parking on the side, there's no potential to put some of that parking in the rear?
Yeah, we can, absolutely.
Again, we face a situation where we're trying to do that along the corridor.
Yeah, that's one of the things you're gonna have to look at, Martha, is that they don't like the parking along the roads.
Either in the front or?
You know, behind the building, basically, what we, you know, we understand that there are sometimes existing conditions, but behind.
I mean, that's, that is the main entrance to the building, right, which is why we also have our handicap spaces there.
I understand that.
That's where our ramp is. And the idea when we, when the Raider Group put this layout together was the idea of preserving yards, right, in terms of adjacent properties, and there's a lot of existing greenery. So, are you talking about that you wanna see less?
Well, if you're not going to move the driveway, and the driveway stays where it's at.
I don't know, I would take these spaces, you have the handicap over here, and try to relocate them back here somewhere.
Yeah, I would also just say that the parking was generally in where the parking is now on the west side, like, that's where it exists now.
Here is, here is brand new.
Right.
Yeah, you've got all of the options there, too.
So, you're saying you wanna see it closer to the?
We'd like to see the parking located behind the buildings. You know, these spaces here are sitting in the, basically, the front yard. To me, you have some room back here where you can play with the parking and get the parking.
And you have an opportunity to put some vegetation there, where you have parking spaces.
Okay.
So, take a look at it.
Sure.
Anthony, what are, are we here for this now?
Yeah, it's, it's.
Okay, let's.
Okay, let's get to it. Impacts on land, I should say yes, by the way, because there's always small impacts on land, so I'm gonna change that to yes. Geological features, no impacts on that. Surface waters, no surface waters or wetlands. Groundwater, no.
Flooding, no.
You know, we're not in density or anything like that. Impact on flooding, I don't believe this area floods if this property is good, and we're gonna get, obviously, a review from the engineer for drainage. Impacts on air, not expected. Impacts on plants and animals, again, this property is cleared in a commercial area. Agricultural resources, again, it's an existing building and an existing commercial sites, and no impacts there. On aesthetic resources, no, they're maintaining the historic nature of the building, so that's good. Impact on historic and archaeological resources, again, no, they're going to maintain the building without changing the historic feature, so that's, they're just changing the use of it. Impacts on open space and recreation, no, site's not used for that. Impacts on critical environmental areas, no, it's not a critical environmental area. Impacts on transportation, yes. And, you know, what I think I have seen, now that we've been getting more of these facilities along Allen in general, is there's an initial impact. I think the curiosity of people go there, and then I think it peters off a little bit as far as, you know, so, but there will be an impact, so we always say yes on that. Impacts on energy, not expected for this use. Impacts on noise, odor, and light, not expected. Impact on human health, you know, that depends on your opinion.
One could say yes.
I'm not saying no here, no, but I know where you're going with looking. Consistency with community plans, again, it means, you know, we have special exception standards for this use. Inconsistency with community character, again, it's an existing building in the highway business for which the use is permitted by special exception. So, you know, I think overall, I would recommend a negative declaration for this project.
That's our action today.
And the second one will come up in two seconds, which is gonna be the deem it complete schedule here.
I would just say, Anthony, just, if you're gonna put a check yes, then put some other kind of comment in the other to substantiate it.
A hundred percent.
You know, as, just to have a record.
I'll do that.
Thanks.
Okay, so we want a neg deck vote, motion by George.
Second.
Second by Tom, all in favor. Proposed abstention, six in favor, one absent.
And then I would recommend deeming the application complete, setting it on the hearing for March twenty-seventh.
March twenty-seventh, okay. Motion to deem it complete, you want one, motion to deem it complete and set the public hearing for March twenty-seventh, by Kate, second by Gloria, and all in favor.
Aye.
Proposed abstention, six in favor, one absent, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I spoke with Seth via text, and he said Verizon Wireless is off.
Off, number fifteen is off.
You changed your sweatshirt to your top.
Okay, on the best.
On the best, sorry, let me.
Here, I can do it.
Yo, here we go.
I was thinking we should take the applicant first.
No, well, this is a carryover, so. Here. So, quickly, quickly read this. Claire, you wanna read it?
I can read it, sure.
Seth's right, Seth, don't blame me.
I'm still here.
All right, Seth, you can read it.
Can I read it, though?
Do the whereas.
Start at the beginning or go right to what your recommendations are? Okay, so, "To further develop a basis for the proposed three-hundred-foot setback distance to single-family residences, residential districts, or occupied community abilities to maximize the safety of the community." Number two, "Further explore the impact a five-hundred-foot buffer to designated coastal evacuation routes will have in determining available sites for the development of BES." Number three, "Further define the opportunity sites listing of, quote, 'municipally-owned properties,' end quote, for example, does this include village-owned properties within the town of Southampton?" Number four, "Include provisions that allow for code development to parallel the technological innovation." Number five, "Consider provisions that would incentivize commercial developments to incorporate battery systems to further reduce fossil fuel emissions."
Oh, I didn't, I include that, we were gonna include the support for the peer review.
Yes, we're wrong.
Yeah, so that'll be a new three. I'll put it under three, since that's the order you did it, if that's okay.
Supports the usage of a peer review throughout the.
Yeah, but that's a whole other thought, so you need to make it six.
Yeah, we can make it six.
And on two, I think you need to confirm what the coastal evacuation routes in the town are, to start with that.
I think those are two separate.
Yeah.
One and two seem to be confused, because I think, you know, we were talking about, consider a five-hundred-foot setback to all of the items listed in one, and then to, the five-hundred-foot buffer was not related to coastal evacuation routes.
What was it?
It was just considering coastal evacuation routes in the.
No, there was, there is something in the legislation about the distance.
Was it five hundred feet?
It's a five hundred to coastal.
But you're saying, instead of, instead of, instead of three hundred feet, consider a five hundred-foot setback.
And the issue with coastal evacuation is not the five hundred feet, that's in the code already, it's about what, where the coastal evacuation routes are.
Yes.
Right.
It's a necessity to delineate and define the coastal evacuation.
Right.
Plan for the east end.
And it was.
So, what, is that a separate one now?
I think we can fold that into two. I believe, further, I mean, we do wanna explore the impact of the five-hundred-foot buffer, but we need further.
Define.
Defined designated coastal evacuation route.
Yeah.
Right.
Twenty-twenty-five coastal evacuation route.
And one will be amended to add, the town board should consider other setback distances.
Well, five hundred, yeah, that's what you're saying.
Right.
Well.
Five hundred and.
Do we wanna pick a number, or do we wanna?
I don't think we do, increase, just an increase. Yes, increase.
First, you have to determine where the three hundred comes from, and then, if necessary, adjust it.
Exactly.
I think that's.
Yeah, that's really what we were gonna say.
What's the basis for the proposed?
To further develop the basis, yes.
And then.
And potentially look at rare distances.
Increase distances.
Yes.
And examine increased distances.
Do you wanna say something about the seven fifty?
Why did Southhold pick seven fifty, and maybe there's a rationale behind it that we can.
You wanted to say, why did Southhold?
Is there a rationale?
I would like to leave it back up to the committee or the town board to say, oh, it should be four hundred or seven fifty or five. They need to come up with a rationale.
Yeah, I don't think we need to point to Southhold, I mean, that's so sophisticated. It's apples to oranges, really.
But I think by saying you're looking for the rationale for three hundred suggests, should it be something else?
Yes.
Okay. But point five, is that supposed to be what George was?
I thought so.
Does that, does that make sense? I'm not sure it does to me, but.
I think you just have to say, you know, I mean, number four and five in particular are very, like, jargon-heavy, right? Let's just say what we mean, right? Number four is, "Consider other code modifications."
Based on technological innovations.
That would allow for other projects to incorporate, you know, energy savings.
You don't need all of that, you just need, based on technological innovations, if technology innovation comes along, will they make a modification, will they amend whatever the code is?
Okay, so separately, we talked about the decentralization of these efforts, which maybe is point seven, then. That in parallel with, in parallel with this effort, the town needs to be considering code modifications that would require or further incentivize energy storage on individual project properties, and that's what you had said.
I think that's what George meant.
Yeah. You don't think that says seven and five?
I think that's supposed to be five, but.
You don't have the word incentivize.
But I'm not sure it says that.
Oh, you do, you have.
It isn't.
That would incentivize commercial developments to incorporate that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And six is support the peer review.
Peer review.
Okay, are we clear on all of this?
Oh, sure.
Chris, fully on the mark.
Any questions?
No, I think I have it, I'm gonna read it back to you. So, on number one, it is, what was the basis of the three-hundred-foot setback? And consider an increased setback to single-family residences, residential districts, and occupied community buildings, okay. Number two, we'll say, "Further explore," is there a five-hundred-foot setback? You can read that, okay.
Yes, it's in the code, yep.
And, and what is, what are the designated coastal evacuation routes? Where are they located?
Define and designate the twenty-twenty-five coastal evacuation route.
Define and designate, where is it?
It should probably show up on the UWLE map.
That's, I wonder if G I S has.
So that.
I don't know, not what I know.
You have to determine.
I can't click on something that says, "Show me the coastal evacuation route."
That's what Tom said.
Identify the evacuation route, it should probably be shown on the UWLE map for guess, but because, just in case, the UWLE map gets too close to a site.
Yeah, it's gonna conflict with.
Okay.
I think those lines will put up right after Hurricane Sandy.
So, three and four stay the same.
And then no one knows.
Nobody ever.
And five stays the same, and six is support peer review.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Right?
Yep.
Everybody got that?
Yep, that's what I had.
Everybody okay?
Yep.
Or six.
Okay, so a motion to approve this referral to the town board on BES. Oh, and do we have here that we will further review it?
Yeah, so the next, whereas the planning board requests to submit additional comments in the proposed legislation.
Okay.
And if you wanna say, "And we'll consider it the same at the February twenty-seventh meeting," so they know you're not just asking for an open-ended?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay.
Because they're gonna incorporate the public comments as well from their yesterday's hearing.
Yes, we have more public comments, and there's.
Okay, so, so the agenda really, for February twenty-seventh, we really need to go over it, because.
Okay.
This is a scrunch.
Okay.
Okay, so a motion to adopt this, by George, second by Tom, all in favor.
And it's.
Six in favor, one absent.
Who's next?
Okay, fifteen is off.
Wow, yes, yes.
All right, now we have a bunch of town board referrals, let's hold them. Are they critical?
Mine is really quick.
Where are you?
I'm fifteen.
You're sixteen, it's a town board referral.
Yeah.
This is about the gate?
It's about, yes, Deerfield property owners, the blind residential district, want to put in entry gates, and they also want to be able to lease out the market rate units only. The affordable units will remain affordable in perpetuity. However, they want to be able to lease the market rate units consistent with the town's rental code chapter two-seventy. So, I did have a quick resolution.
Is this in their condominium plan, is, are these condos?
They're condos.
Do they have to amend that?
Yes, they will have to amend that.
And have it approved by New York State?
Correct.
But first, they need our approval?
Correct, because the PDD prohibited them from renting out the market rate units, which is.
Any idea? They're currently owned?
They are all owned, and they're supposed to be owner-occupied, all of them. However, consistent with everybody else who owns private market rate property in the town, they want to be able to rent it pursuant to a rental permit. So, I do have a quick resolution for you, just in support of that.
And the gated entrance?
And the gated entrance was for privacy reasons, obviously, there has been practices on adjacent properties which have caused some concerns for their.
And I think in the past, doesn't the fire marshal have to weigh in on?
Right, they have to have a certain setback from the, the, from the road for fire access. We'll have to get a site plan for that.
Okay.
So, what is this action?
So, this is to recommend approval of the code amendments.
Maybe we have no objection.
Right, right, having no objection.
Do we have to have, it's a code, not a covenant, so.
It's a code amendment, because it is a PDD.
Of course.
Okay, any comments on this? Everybody okay, so motion, motion by Gloria, second by Kate, all in favor. Proposed abstention, six in favor, one absent.
Jackie.
Yeah.
I have an applicant here, number twenty-nine, six-thirty Millstone, can we do that one?
What is that, what number?
It's actually very quick, it's just transferring.
Where is, what number is it?
Oh, twenty-nine.
Yeah, let's jump to twenty-nine. Please look at any, if anything can be moved to the next planning board meeting.
I can't, I have to do the site plan.
I'll get through my stuff first.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
So, six-thirty Millstone, this is a property, I have it up here. It's an app for protection overlay district.
George.
It's allowed twenty percent clearing, and the applicant is requesting to transfer from development rights certificate, from Bridgehampton, this is in Bridgehampton, it's coming from Bridgehampton. And it doesn't have to be the school district anyway, because it's not a density issue. But they drink, and they want it to go up to twenty-five percent on the property, which would allow an additional eight thousand five hundred and forty-seven square feet above. But they're allowed, which would bring the total of the clearing that this property would be permitted to forty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty square feet. Normally, when we do the transfer, we, our policy is, you could go up to the next, the next range, but not beyond that. What we find is, a lot of these properties, Millstone Road, Middle Line Highway, when they get building permits, they, and I understand, they're putting the houses way back in the woods here, that's why they want the houses. These driveways take up a lot of that clearing, is what's happening. So, in this particular case, it's a development rights certificate number zero-zero-zero-three-point-zero, and it's coming from tax app number nine hundred dash fifty-four dash one dash three-point-two. And I'm recommending approval of the transfer of the development rights from that property, and then a new certificate will be issued, because they're not using all the development right in that case. And that will allow this property twenty-five percent clearing, and it's subject to a covenant. We didn't do this in the past, but they, we should be filing covenants when we change the clearing, because we have no way of really knowing.
Yeah, yeah.
That it's been done, so, that would be my recommendation.
So, is this in the school, same school district?
It is, but it's not relevant, because it's no density.
Any questions? Okay, motion to approve, motion by Gloria, second by David, all in favor. Proposed abstention, six in favor, one absent. Okay, what can we get through here? We've got some extensions.
Well, you know, I have this change, if you look at number seventeen, where we had these referrals.
Yes.
So, if you look up here, the one that I have, says the change in building classification. This is right where Sunrise and Canada Thirty-Nine come together, you have the hotel behind here, and the gas station,
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
and then a commercial building here, it's our forty zone.
Residential zone, yeah.
Residential zone, the owner of this piece came in for a change. Residential zone. The, the owner of this piece came in for, uh, a change of zone to the.
Dance papers.
Dance papers, uh, to the town board. Um, and then part of the reason is, is because there's a ZBA decision, um, and previous constant changing from one non-conforming use to another.
Yeah.
Uh, but it becomes a problem for these properties. So the town board, and I went to the town board with Janice, so I've been working on it. The town board said, let's, let's look at the whole corner then, since they're all commercially zoned. So the, what they're doing is.
They're not commercial, they're residential.
I mean, residential zone to, they want to be zoned commercially to highway business.
They have never been residential use, ever.
That makes sense. But now what about sizing on highway business at fifteen thousand square feet?
Uh, yes, um, but that also becomes a, a, a product of the size of the property, whether you could accommodate the parking for it, and then that kind of stuff. Just because a property can have fifteen thousand square feet building doesn't mean it can, because the thing, it's like residential property. We allow twenty thousand square feet, but most properties can't accommodate a twenty thousand. Um, but if, what we could say is that the commercial zoning, uh, is more appropriate, uh, for these pieces, uh, but that a concern would be, um, uh.
How they can be used.
How they could be, how they could be used. Uh, but they would become, you know, obviously subject to site plan approval from the planning board itself.
Did the County Road thirty-nine corridor study talk about these at all?
Did not.
That was the first question the town board asked.
So these are among the hills, right?
This includes the gas station and hotel?
Yeah, the gas station, the hotel, and dance papers are all technically residentially zoned. They have never been homes for obvious reasons, nor will they ever be. So it's just about recognizing how these slots have been.
Didn't the town board vote on this the other night, or was that to have a public hearing?
Probably a public hearing, a little further east.
Yeah, I have a friend.
Yes, right there.
So it makes sense, it makes sense to rezone them commercial, that's for sure.
Yeah, I mean, that, and we'll say then, we'll say, you know, but the planning board, you know, recognizes its concerns that, you know, commercial property could become overdeveloped on it, you know, and then.
Okay.
I think that would be okay.
You could also gain cross-access then possibly, right, and, and have everybody.
Funnel out through that.
Get out of Hill Station.
Through the site plan process.
And approve that.
Now, there's a difference in elevation between the hotel and the gas station. I live across the street on Hill Station.
But from the dance papers, you could close it off and then, you know, get some connectivity and close that, because that's really, that dance paper's property is a problem with.
Is there any way to get another five feet right of way out of this?
Oh, oh. There is. I think the last site plan on the dance lot, I think, had a cross-access element to it.
Okay.
Into the Bentley?
Into the Bentley.
Yeah, those other properties don't. They, you know, done so long ago.
Is there any way that the town or county can get another five feet right of way out of this?
We could certainly make the recommendation that way.
Wait, which right of way? On County Road thirty-nine. Get five feet of that. One of the many issues counties had with that is the lack of right-of-way along thirty-nine. And at one point, we were trying to get.
So you want the property owners to give you five more feet?
I'm throwing that number out there. I think there was actually discussion of more than that.
I think that should be part of our referral.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's unreasonable, if you want to do that.
So I'll also put in our recommendation that, um.
Request additional right-of-way. Janice and I had a conversation about that with the traffic committee. Um, so I'd maybe go back to her. She had a number in mind that we were trying to get many years ago that we never were successful at, that, not this particular.
Maybe the commercial, uh, nature of these properties were more looking at widening the road.
We were talking about all applications, not just these three, but I talked to Janice about that.
And that to promote cross-access to funnel traffic on Hill Station.
Hundred percent.
So those three.
Anything more? That's it? The only other thing I would say is a road widening would accommodate better drainage, because there is some flooding in that area when it rains, significant rain.
There's, yeah, but the issue is there's no more right-of-way. There.
Right, so I'm supporting what you're saying and adding the drainage.
Yes, yes.
And the, the undeveloped property to the south is the state-owned extension of the Sunrise Hundred.
Right.
Right, and that's, yeah, that's much deeper. There's a lot of.
But I'm just saying that'll never be developed.
Don't say never.
Now, it won't be developed, could be used for road.
Twenty-second.
Okay, so we've got those three, Anthony?
Yeah, so we'll, uh, resolve the seventy referral comments to the town.
Okay.
Thank you. This, the town board, uh, hearing is not next week, but the week after, before your next hearing.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thanks, Carl.
Okay, let's have a motion on this. Motion by, uh, Tom, second by George, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, um, six in favor, one absent.
Let me just do my two extensions, and I'll go ready for the meeting.
Where are your extensions?
Twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Uh, Richard Abadon Foundation, um, it says an extension, uh, the night of the date, the submission of the final maps until May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, motion, till May what?
Thirteen.
Motion.
A motion by Kate, second by Gloria, and all in favor. Opposed, abstention, six in favor, one absent.
And then two, two, five, and two, five, one, Butler Lane. Uh, that's also an extension, position, submission of the final maps for signature, and that's until April eighth, twenty twenty-five.
April eighth. Motion by Gloria, and second by Kate, all in favor. Opposed, abstention, six in favor, one absent. Okay.
You have another extension of twenty-six, you want us to give it on?
Yeah.
Is there a second extension?
Oh, for the.
Prender.
Yeah, that's for thirteen, eight, fifteen Summit Boulevard. The number was that?
So number twenty-six.
Twenty-four.
Until what?
Until May, uh, to May nineteen.
May nineteen, okay, extension, motion.
Motion.
Motion by Kate, second by David, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, twenty-six.
Let me reflect that was here, please.
Thank you.
May, extension to May nineteen. Six, motion, but we did the motion and second and vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, six in favor, one absent. Okay, so we've done twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Signed site plans, Gloria, and is acknowledging number thirty, the wave center.
I, I signed wave center, and I signed, signed okay.
Okay, so acknowledging signatures on thirty and thirty-one.
And thirty-two, one fifty-seven is an extension.
Okay, number thirty-two is a ninety-day extension. Motion? Motion by Kate, second by David, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, six in favor, one absent. Okay, so.
We have, I have a bunch here.
There's so many problems. I think we stopped right after the town board referrals.
Okay, so we do have one more referral, and then we've got. Yeah, who, who are you?
I'm twenty-one.
Crystal, Chrysler Dodge?
Yeah, so that's to deem it complete, schedule a public hearing.
Okay, number twenty-one.
This is the one immediately next to Wright Rivian, so this would have the connection.
Okay.
Is it complete?
It is complete. It doesn't show the connection, so I'm gonna have them prepare that plan for the public hearing.
Okay, do you have complete and the extension?
Um, public hearing.
Public hearing.
Do we, do we have room on the thirteenth, Harry? Is that right?
Yep.
March thirteenth.
Yep.
Okay, motion to deem it complete and schedule a public hearing. By, uh, George, second by Gloria, and all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, six in favor, one absent. What else can we quickly do here?
Uh, so you guys have yours, not anything else?
Yeah.
And I'll do the sand mines.
We'll leave the sand mines till end.
Nineteen was where we left off, right?
Yep. Townsend of New York.
Yeah, Townsend of New York. This is a, a pre-application for a two-lot subdivision at forty-four ninety, uh, New York Road in New York. Um, this, I have the draft report here. The applicant's relative is not in attendance today, and there is no, um, this is a draft, and the deadline to adopt it will be at the next meeting. If you want me to go through it, or I can distribute it.
Just distribute it, just distribute it.
So I take it off, off the list.
Yes, yeah.
She's, she's busy walking.
Here, I'll take it, Prender.
And you're left.
And I think you have one more, the end of the card.
What are you?
Um, yeah, I'm really.
Gloria, let me call it, okay?
Don't just like, like, five minutes. Yeah, do you hear? Yeah, I'll be right back for this.
All right, so the first one is Stillwater Tree Farm, pre-submission conference.
Number twenty-two.
Okay, um, it's incomplete. Uh, we need elevations of the proposed storage building, and there are some other outstanding issues for which they were cited for, um, which will also be addressed as part of the submission conference. Uh, so that's just a resolution to deem it incomplete.
Okay, motion to deem Stillwater Tree Farm incomplete. Motion by George, second by Tom, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, six in favor, one absent.
Next one is Alexander Breland. This is a little copy of Type One Action. Um, it's a two-lot subdivision. It's Type One because it's in the Ag Overlake District. We had had a public hearing, and we had deemed it complete, because the Health Department had said that they would approve it, subject to filing of easements, but they can't get me the maps, because they're still working on the easement, so we're just, to stop the timeframes, putting it as an incomplete application.
So number twenty-three, Michelle Breland, deeming it incomplete. Motion by Kate, second by Gloria, and all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, six in favor.
And then the next one is Charos LLC. This was a pre-submission conference that we did last October in twenty twenty-three. Um, it expired the pre-submission conference report. Uh, they are still looking to proceed with the site plan, um, but nothing that's really changed at the site. They had cross-access at the site. And just for your reference, this is the old diner near, uh, Pier One, so there is cross-access there. It was for medical buildings on the, uh, southerly half of the property. So it's just an extension of the pre-submission conference report, so they can file their site plan.
The old diner near Pier One and.
Yes, where the diner used to be there, next to Pier One.
Motion to extend the mission report.
Uh, motion by George, second by Gloria, and all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, six in favor, one absent. Prender, you're the old file map?
Yeah, the vendor built, uh.
Number twenty-five.
The diner's still there.
It's got a. It's the owners, um, at twenty-five Columbia Avenue in West Hampton are requesting, uh, abandoning a portion of Glenwood Street. Their, their immediate half or twenty-foot wide portion. And, um, Peter, I think, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll ship it over.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody.
This is the one outlined in red, and Glenwood Street is, uh, I guess ended in Paper Road.
We have someone on Zoom.
There's, um, the applicant, the attorney, Will Shapiro, in front of me. Um, yeah, so there's, uh, currently the, the owner's driveway is occupying that space. We are requesting the abandonment. There is a subdivision, a three-lot subdivision that it backs up to. Uh, I don't believe it affects them. They also have, uh, covenants and restrictions in the subdivision that, uh, where they have to share an access point off of this, uh, this called the Saffron North Quarter Road, and no other vehicle access anywhere else. Um, I don't know who has anything else to add to that, or if there's any questions.
Okay, is there someone on Zoom that we can see?
Yes, hi, this is Will Shapiro. I'm the attorney for the applicant. Good evening, good afternoon.
Can you increase your volume, please?
Uh, yes, uh, can you hear me?
Yeah, that's better.
Yep.
Okay, hi. I don't have any comments, but I'm happy to answer any questions that any of the board members have.
Prender, anything?
Yeah, I'm gonna, uh, if you have a, you know, I wanna make sure I mentioned the subdivision in the back, if, because there was any concerns from the board, um, but.
Can you zoom in on that, Chris?
Yeah.
So there's still sufficient access to all the other parcels with the abandonment here?
Sufficient access.
Except his, that, if that, if that, he said, that proposed driveway access.
Their driveway currently occupies the space that they're requesting.
But it also seems to occupy the piece that's, it's still over onto the, the, on the other portion of the property, of the road.
Yeah. I don't know, I think the original request came in, the letter, uh, Will, I think, the, the request was for the full forty. I did confirm with, uh, you're seeing that they cannot do that. They, they each have to abandon their half, and then do a land transfer if they ever wanted to take over the full, full width. Um, but I, I don't know how that works.
Is that, so the driveway is constructed right now? So is that the path?
Yeah, that's how the driveway is currently exists. This, this is not a proposed improvement, the driveway. Uh, the plan tentatively is to see this application through and then approach the neighbor about possibly abandoning the northern twenty feet, and then trying to potentially acquire from them, but we didn't want to put the cart before the horse in that regard.
But is there spill over onto somebody else's property here that has to be cleaned up before?
It's spill over, so this is the forty potential, why?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He, they're allowed to abandon this twenty feet.
Right.
And this remains a, a road right-of-way. But typically, that'd be, that could be abandoned and incorporated into that other property to the north.
Right.
So, but right now, his driveway spills over across the entire, onto that.
So it's spill over onto the Paper Road, not, not.
Right, on the Paper Road.
Property to the north.
But it, that's never, besides the banning that twenty feet incorporated on their property, will then be on their property.
Yeah, I think we need to.
It's been seen that they have to be done at the same time. The, the neighbor has to abandon it at the same time.
I'm not sure how to approach that. Maybe we have to.
Some legal advice.
So this is where the, their deed says they own half the road? Is that?
No, so, it said, did, do you have a survey that you're looking at that I could, uh, submit with my application from Scalise Land Survey?
Yes. Right.
Okay, do you see the version that has, um, the northerly forty feet, and then there's the twenty-foot, uh, dotted, there's a line horizontally.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we have that.
So that entire forty-foot strip is not owned by us nor the neighbor. So below the lower dotted line, where the asphalt gate, you can see the word asphalt gate. That line is where our actual property currently ends. That's like our meets and mounds of our insured lot. Um, the forty feet in the north, we're trying to get the bottom twenty feet of it. I originally applied for the entire forty feet, but I was advised that we are only entitled to the southerly twenty feet. So to reiterate what I said before, like, the goal is to get that entire forty feet. But I think that, uh, without speaking out of turn, I think that the neighbor to the north would have to apply or somehow assign their rights to apply to that nor, northerly twenty feet, and then we would have to do some type of lot-line modification or something. But like I said, I wanted to pursue what we were entitled to before even going there, which was the, the southerly twenty feet of that area, as I was told.
Prender, is there, is there a deadline on this?
There is no deadline. I don't know, do you, would you want to do them both at the same time?
I think you should, I think you should pull up the old file map.
It makes more sense for both for each house than the neighbor, because he's already got an encroachment.
Right.
So you want this person in here first.
Yeah, encroachment right now is on a right-of-way, so it doesn't, it doesn't need.
I mean, we've got a driveway on, on a paper road.
Well, nonetheless, though, it's at best case on a road.
I don't know how we got some, a building service.
It's an encroachment, no matter what we cut it.
Put a driveway on a paper road.
Can I suggest that, that you have a discussion with Dave Wilcox in the background to how this works?
Yes.
And what, what the information that this has, before we may have any action.
If this town, if the town opened this old file map, then we have to verify whether or not this portion is part of that old file map, and if so, this person, the applicant, does he own half, half, you know, you can only, the code says only half, you can only abandon half of the road.
Do you want both of those neighbors coming out at the same time?
Yeah, so we, first you have to look at the old file map, and that's excellent advice. Ask David about it. So sorry, we might, we might have to bring you back. What we need to do some more research on this.
Okay.
So there's no action on this.
You could put this gentleman in touch with Dave. How would you do that?
I could tell him his contact information.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Prender, no action on this. Claire, we're.
Ready?
Left for you.
Sand mines.
No, wait, twenty, did we do twenty? Or that's set?
Right, number twenty, set.
He said nineteen, Town of New York Road. We just distributed that. And then twenty, Marty and Judy Shepherd, covenant amendment.
He said it's off. There's no deadline with that.
Okay, that's off. So we're left with number eighteen, the amortization of the non-conforming sand mines.
Yes, so you've gotten it before, but I have a copy for you alls.
Thank you.
Had to have a lesson from Janice, and what this is all about.
You can share that with us.
Yes. So this is a code looking to amortize the non-conforming sand mines that are located in the town. So there are eight of them.
In residential districts.
Yes. Yes, I don't think there's any in any other district other than that. And, um. I don't think there's any in any other district other than that, and...
I thought it was only, it was limited to sand mines in residential districts. No. I don't think it's sand mines in total.
Page three, second paragraph from the bottom mentions residential zoning districts.
Right.
There was a comment that if it's because of aquifer overlay, aquifer protection, why wouldn't you amortize them everywhere, not just in residential?
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Right.
Their special groundwater protection areas, or jeopardizes the town's drinking water. So talk to us a little bit more about this, and we can...
So right now, the way it's written, there's been a lot of public comments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it's about whether these sand mines to, to amortize, realizing that people have invested, you know, in purchasing the property, starting the operation, gotten the approvals from the DEC, and the town is finding now that they wish to amortize these because of becoming nuisances, right? In certain areas, and certain, certain ones have had numerous complaints against them. So the way they've written it is that the ZBA is the decider. They would receive these applications where the person comes to say, they can either say, you could notice that you shall close, right, in a certain time period, or you can go to ZBA, and the ZBA will grant you one, two, three, four, five, six, seven years left.
Is there a formula?
Yes, based upon the fact of how close are you to finishing the operation? So if you're almost done, it makes sense just to give you another year, and you can completes the, the, what you can get out of it, and then have a reclamation plan, right?
So, is there any, has there been any discussion about how long the sand mines have been in operation, and how much they've extracted, and what was the value of that? Because it's not like they haven't had value return over all these years.
Mm-hmm.
They have.
That's part of, that's part of what Claire was saying about, there's a formula based on how much.
Yeah.
In other words, we're, we're, we want to get rid of this nuisance, but we also don't want to just shut it down arbitrarily, so depending upon how much sand you still have left. You can, you can keep going, and there's, I, I haven't read this today, but I've watched a bunch of board hearings. So, if, for, the longer you've had the sand line, the shorter the time probably is for you to keep doing it, using it, because you don't have that much sand left.
Right. I think they tried to bend over backwards to make sure that the owners are not feeling like they're just being thrown aside. So they're being, they're being careful about the investment, as you described, and that the longer they have it, the more they have extracted, the value is returned, and, but every one of them is allowed an appeal mechanism. No matter how long they have it, everyone can appeal and get some relief, right, as you describe it. So it seems to me they, they really put that in place so that they are not seen as an arbitrary governmental figure that's just slamming the door shut.
And they gave some of that on the icon five of the section, which is a presumptive termination period based on percentage of completion of sand.
The amount of time.
And then it's we have to the applicant to, to go to the ZBA to make a case for some extra time beyond what's presumed, what's presumed.
Yeah, that's the real issue, whether the ZBA will allow, beyond the formula.
Right.
But is there any mine that's been recently permitted? Because most of these have to be older, right? They all have to be approaching the end.
But what's happening is they're going to the DEC to expand their, their, what they're allowed to do, whether in this way or this, this way.
Ah, yeah, 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 yeah.
They've gone quite deep into the ground, into the...
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there are some sand lines in, in, well, we've, I think we've got them in West Hampton, where they're actually in the, in the avenue for them.
Oh, my.
And... And I don't think anything in here addresses the sand mines that are actually doing mulching.
It doesn't, because mulching is a number of non-conforming users.
But they're, that's part of the problem, is that they are mulching when they've run out of sand. And that's, and, and that's where there's been controversy about what it's doing to the aquifer.
So, so based on that, who is the verifier? Who verifies if I, if I have a sand mine and I come to you, and I say, oh, I, I think I have fifteen years left? Who verifies that?
Yeah, right now, the only entity that's doing verification is the applicant.
Is the DEC.
DEC is issuing permits for, you might own, you know, that much, and you've been mining this, they say, oh, no, I want to now mine this, and they apply to the DEC, and they, they get a modification.
And there's been a lot of concern that the DEC is not doing an appropriate job.
Environment, exactly.
New York State lets DEC control sand mines, except on Long Island, where there's local zoning control.
So, okay, so local zoning trumps DEC?
Yes, and that's, that's been the, between the town and DEC, there have been lawsuits up the wazoo.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so the residential zoning component of this, is that related to complaints of nuisance noise and things like that? Is that, like, because most of the issue here outlines a significant environmental hazard, but then it's limiting it to the qualifier of residential zoning district and special groundwater protection area. So, like, that's what you were saying before, it should be anywhere. If we're concerned about a critical resource, you know, why are we amortizing this, you know?
Why are we limiting it only to...
Yeah, residential.
Residential.
Should be anywhere.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep.
There's groundwater is everywhere.
Yeah.
So, I mean, in general, we support the amortization of the, of the sand mine.
I personally support amortization of all non-conforming uses.
Yes, I think that's important to say.
I feel personally very strongly about that, the, when, when we allow non-conforming to increase, it just continues to continue problems.
Yeah.
Nonsense properties, so that should be the first thing, the planning board supports. Say it.
Amortization of all non-conforming uses.
Say swift amortization of all harmful, non-conforming uses.
So there's nothing...
This is significantly harmful.
And so what happens is that some of the amortization charts prolong the use, so that the environmental degradation is continued and exacerbated.
Right.
Especially if they can keep going to DEC and getting more and more permits.
Exactly.
Can we say anything in here that says we advocate for...
Well, there is local, should be...
Full stop.
Our, our local law should overcome the DEC.
Right.
Okay, so we should say that.
Yeah.
But there have been applicants that have gone to the DEC, and then they refuse to shut down, and it's, and there's been litigation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, good support statement in there, I think.
Well, let's make that.
So I like the first one, so the planning board supports the swift amortization of all harmful non-conforming uses. And I mean, referencing the, what was it, 2019, there was like an additional amendment to the rights of the people in New York State to clean envi, you know, clean water, air, et cetera. So that's a new finding, maybe that clears up some of these lawsuits. If that's between the DEC and the town, then, you know, the town could easily say, well, you can't extend these.
It's between the town and the, and the applicant, not the DEC.
Do we support the amortization of swift, the swift amortization of all harmful non-conforming uses, or do we support the amortization of all non-conforming uses? Do they have to be swift and harmful? I mean...
No.
Well, the swiftness is, is...
Really, it's surprising harm, and why are you going to give them another five years? It's, that's crazy.
I mean, are we making the distinction whether they're harmful or not?
I, yeah, I think...
Yeah, we don't need the word harmful.
Just say non-conforming, get, get rid of the non-conforming uses.
Okay.
Yeah, because some are harmful, some are... But what language can we, can we suggest that this amortization not go on in perpetuity?
Yeah.
Well, that's the point of amortization.
Right.
This should be after seven, I mean, with this legislation, this would be all on in eight years.
As long as DEC doesn't issue more permits, even though we can turn it down, but maybe we need a statement in the sense that we advocate for the complete, immediate cessation of any DEC permits or additional sand mines. Can we say?
We can't, I don't think we can do that.
Okay.
But we can reinforce the town's authority, Claire, that we can reinforce that the town's authority over sand mines be reinforced.
Yeah.
And so could, is there a scenario where it would have to be a change of the legislation authorizing CPF, but if there was a way to have a pot of money where the activity could cease immediately in a case like this, where groundwater is such a critical resource, the amortization would be the payout of that value, of dollar value, to the business or the owner of the property, but they don't get to keep on doing the degrading activity and selling off the resource?
So sort of a part of the town's...
I think we should try to, to focus on this legislation. I think they're looking for our comments on this legislation.
Yeah.
I think we should...
Find a, find a different way to...
Well, but, but, you know, I understand.
Cease activity and repair the value.
I can't, I can't, because this gives them to say, first of all, it says that less than you, if you, less than fifty percent of what you have permitted right now, you have to, up to seven years to continue your...
Yeah.
That's nuts.
That's a long time.
Well, they're saying, so, and then, that still allows them to go to ZBA to get an extension on that time, if they can make a case that ZBA will accept.
Right.
Okay, to say, what if we, what if, so why can't the town board look into using CPF funds to pay out the, the value of all the term?
The value of the mine, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
And maybe you see separation, and maybe that's, and I think that's a great idea.
It's a very good idea.
Okay. Why just let them keep on doing it?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Because, because of that, because of mechanism, the law...
Utilize funding.
And then, you know, we get...
Should we say CPF, or should we just say funding?
And the property then should revert to the town.
Use funding.
Right?
Revert to the town.
Right, yeah, because they're buying out the property, so that becomes non-property.
Right, is there a value that's left in the property, right? Because that's the, the appraisal of the property isn't based on a density allotment, it's based on the value of the property to that business, right? Fine, tell us what you have left.
Now we run up into things like, you know, so you take one in West Hampton, which they're now proposing a, you know, floating solar, you know, on the, on the, on the aquifer, e-essentially, right? Is that, is it, so the thing would, if you like, it would be, to the town, actually purchase the property and extinguish the use, and then become...
Extinguish the mining use, but it is an opportunity site for solar, for sustainable.
Well, for, for solar, for energy solar.
And if the town was really creative, they would put together two businesses, instead of, if they can't use CPS bonds, go to an energy supplier and match up a solar to buy out the property. But I don't know if they're going to be...
The town did use CPF money to buy a bunch of nightclubs before they shut them down.
Yes.
Yes, they did.
So we, we do have, we should have a precedent.
Let's think of the sand mine as a nightclub.
They were, they were identified as an opportunity, opportunity zone. Really, the CPF, you bought the nightclubs?
Yeah.
Oh, good idea.
On Zonadunes.
Yeah, good idea.
How about the one, yeah.
What'd you say, Tom?
The Marina.
In the best legislation, we know that, sand mines were identified as an opportunity zone, so they are thinking about switching the use to that.
So we should emphasize that.
I like it.
That if sand mines are considered an opportunity zone, or have been designated an opportunity zone, then it goes hand in hand with the town buying up the remaining value of the mine.
Right, so looking back at the, like, um...
Let, let her get this language down.
Sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
So just like to build that case out, you could look at, I can't remember, Neptune's and, you know, Alt Down on Dune Road in Hampton Bays, right? Like, the business said, look, I could have made this much money off of my property, you know, how was that deal put together? I.e., nightclubs.
Yeah.
I mean, this is a critical resource.
I mean, your, the scale of these...
The town board is going to hate us.
The one that's been most contentious, that was thirty-two acres.
The people of Southampton Town against...
I think, I think we're...
Is this the one, the parcel that West Hampton Beach owns?
No, the, this is one, I think, out of Noyac, that's been the most contentious from reading the papers.
Oh, the sand line, sand.
Right, and that's, I believe, thirty-two acres. And I did watch the public hearings, as you did, and the owner was talking about the millions of dollars invested in.
Yeah.
And there is a debate about what it means by harmful or polluting. But Jackie raised a good point, he invested millions, but how much has he already profited?
Yes, they've already...
You know, he may have already more than matched his investment, which you don't want to say you can't have any profit. I'm just, I'm talking about the assessed value of those properties.
They've already monetized that resource.
Yeah.
And they've had years of monetizing the resource.
Well, that's, that's what this amortization is supposed to do, it's like, okay, you're almost done, we'll, we'll give you enough time to just, I mean, in, in theory, I, I think it makes sense, but I like the idea of shutting it down.
Let the town buy out the remaining resource with whatever funding is available.
And they could use CPF water quality money.
Right.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's a...
That's what it's for.
Can you put that in there, Claire, please?
That's what it's for.
Not just, not just by the remaining operation, but by the property and, and, I mean, if it's some stuff.
Yeah, well, and they, they could even, like, so here's a suggestion, too, it doesn't have to just be a town initiative, because you have Suffolk County, the zero-point-two-five percent money, and you have the state EPF water quality improvement funding, so they could kind of piece money together with multiple entities to buy up, because it probably is a lot of money, so, anyway. Get creative. Figure it out, we need more.
Suggest town board utilize town funding, such as CPF, or county or state funding, to buy out property and remaining value. Buy either the nightclubs or the...
Yeah, I mean, we, we, I think we have a...
So the first one is to eliminate non-conforming users, we believe that, and the second one is a mechanism.
Well, the second one is do it all, all zoning districts.
Yes, yes, second one is, should have part of all.
Due, due to the concern about, to the concern about the impact on the groundwater.
Yeah, if, if water is an issue...
On the, they're, they're doing the definition.
The whole, the whole time.
Yeah. If water is an issue, it should be everywhere.
And then the third is a mechanism, that we propose a mechanism.
Yeah, I like that.
That's great, that's great.
But it is a good point, you may want to...
Save the water.
That you, you know, this will, this could allow for...
I couldn't wait for this conversation, because I feel so strongly about it.
In a shorter period of time.
Yeah, yeah.
The problem child.
Yeah.
These are good suggestions, but have we...
I think we have tested.
How do we feel about this legislation?
It's inadequate. I mean, we can't say that in the headline.
I think we support the legislation.
We support, yeah.
Well, you support the amortization. That's what you're saying.
Well, that's the first thing we said, we support amortization everywhere.
Support the idea, this is good.
Looks reasonable.
We want it expanded, Tom, to not include only residential.
Right.
We wanted to include all sand mines.
Right.
And we, what was the third?
We recommend that they use creative money to shut them, buy it out, shut them down.
Up to, to, yeah. Mention opportunity sites.
Oh, yeah, that the opportunity sites.